Hi there.
How are you?
I wonder why this is going this way? There's a little ship that came coming into the...
It's coming, it's over.
Okay, uh, it's, I think it's 6 o'clock.
You can come join us, you don't have to sit way over there.
My name is, well, Tony said I had to be a buffer.
You can come, it's moving in.
Just moving in.
Okay, uh, the purpose of the initial budget committee meeting, we as, we typically do, we add some changes that, to the operating budgets of capital outlay things that we need to address prior to the public hearing. Additionally, you will notice that there are some money articles, warrant articles that we have not voted on yet. So, how, let Theresa start with some operating budget items that we need to address.
Yep, under general government, in the, under the workers' comp, workers' comp, I got the bill for 2011, which was, the amount was different from what was proposed to the committee. Due to the, the figures they gave me to figure out how much workers' comp would be were 2010 rates, not 2011. So, we need to increase that line by 3,193.
Okay, just as on the general government page 10, under workers' comp, from 41711 to 44904.
44904, yep.
It's still at 85?
Still at 85, yep.
I want to take, can a motion change the workers' comp line?
Some of.
Second.
We got a motion to second to change the workers' comp line to 44904.
Couldn't hear who seconded. I'm gonna start watching, so.
Jerry.
12.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, Trish?
Um, under capital outlay?
Well, give a chance to find the pages.
Yep. Um, it's under financial affairs. Uh, page 2. The US Department of Justice desk grant for 1950. I, I was thinking that that was a 100% covered grant, that we didn't have to do a warrant article with the 50-50 grant. And after discussing it over with Chief Mike Fields, um, we agreed that it would be okay to leave it out this year, and we'll try to add it next year.
Page 2.
So you need a motion to reduce the 1950 by 1950 to that. I'll make that one.
I get a motion to zero off the 1950?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. The next one, which I guess I put, is still in capital outlay, the one up above it, the police equipment grant, 4885, that's actually a warrant article. So I think that that needs to be removed out of capital outlay right now.
I don't know, Dick.
I don't know the process on that.
You can still, you can still have it here as a warrant art, as a, as a capital outlay, and as a warrant article.
Yeah, we can do both, as long as we don't put it in the operating budget.
Oh, so we just subtract it from the operating?
Operating, yeah, it just gets a...
Because you don't want it in, you don't want it in...
You don't want it in the operating budget and in the...
You don't want it in this warrant article, this last warrant article.
You don't want it in the operating budget.
So we need to reduce it.
So we need to reduce the operating budget. Correct, Trish? Because it's right now, right now, we're just in that number.
Article 35, I will give you a correct number.
Well, don't we have to reduce this also? This bottom line?
Actually, that doesn't go into the operating budget total anyway.
Capital outlay goes in the final article budget.
Unless it's a separate warrant.
Unless it's a separate warrant.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, sometimes we need that total, sometimes we don't, because sometimes we pull individual lines out to be addressed separately. But certainly, we can do it if you get it figured out.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, 22895 instead of 24845, I make a motion. We do that line, subtracting the 1950.
Okay, I, I tried it too easy. Did Connie move something, and how we seconded it, was it from...
The bottom, revision of the bottom line of the capital outlay.
Which is?
22895.
22895, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
She took out the 1950, which was for the justice grade.
Well, we can leave it in there. It seems to me that we can have individual lines in the capital outlay budget, as long as it doesn't go into the appropriation for the operating budget.
Is this the 1950, is that 50? That is a 50-50 grant, so 1950 is the 50.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we took that whole thing out.
Right.
If you look at 2010, and you have the fast, fire, fast response vehicle.
Exactly.
For 35,000.
That's a good example.
That was a separate warrant article, but it belongs under capital outlay because it's a one-time expense.
Right.
It's a, you know, it's just for that year. So it's in the right spot, but it's a separate warrant article, so you don't include it in the operating budget.
Right.
In this, in the...
Right. So, that, that's where I remember doing it before, it was last year. But what we're gonna do is look at Article 35.
Right.
Article 35, now, now read, 3 million, that, 43, 861.
And that I already subtracted out, the 1950.
Okay, so now we have to take out the difference between the 4 and the 5.
So take out 4885.
And then add back in?
3193.
3193. It's a difference of 1692, a reduction of 1692. Somebody double check my math. 16, I got 1692. Jerry, did you get 1692?
I didn't, yeah, I didn't bring my calculator.
Yes, 1692. So the actual new, the total should be 3 million, 942,169. Somebody should double check me. I don't remember the straight. Yeah. Uh, I got, never mind.
861 minus 1692. Yeah, 3 million, 942,169.
I got 2, okay.
Now, what does that do to the default budget?
So the default budget, we need to, um...
Shouldn't do anything to the default budget.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything with the 488, 4,885.
But it may increase...
But it does increase it with the workers' comp.
Right.
So the total default then would be 3 million, 857,224. Is that coming out right?
I got 3 million, 863,610.
No, that's not what she said. She said 3,857,224.
I'm adding 3193, right? Increase the workers' comp line.
Oh, yeah.
3 million, 860,417. 3 million, 863,610.
Can we start with the operating budget on page 2, where it's 3 million, 850?
Page 2, on the new summary that we just handed out.
Okay, and then what are you adding to that?
The, all of the, uh, capital outlay, except the 4885.
So we got 3,850,633.
Yeah. Minus 4885. Plus 3193. But she already took the...
It's an 11. About $9,000 difference.
Take down the operating budget, 3,850,633. Part of the sewer goes in there, right?
I'm not, I'm not hearing what you guys...
Some of the sewer has to go in, to the appropriation.
Yeah, 70,000, on the last page, sewer operating budget, 70,333.
Yeah.
So sewer, plus capital outlay, plus operating budget. Then minus 4885, and plus the 3193.
Yep, same numbers, 3,942,169. Sure, took that out. So we agree that that is the operating budget, the Article 35, but not, we're gonna use the right terminology, it's not just the operating budget. It's the warrant article 35. And the default will be 3 million, 863, 310, 610, excuse me.
What do you have, Miss Card?
3, 3 million, 863,610. The only thing you gotta add to that is the workers' comp addition, because that's, we have no choice, it's a contract. So you add that to 3 million, 86417.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody's told me.
Forgot the, out of the house, I thought. We have to add the 3193.
Don't we still take away the 4885?
That was in the last year's budget. For the default budget, they have to be, start with last year's budget, add to contracts to take away.
Do we have a copy of the default budget?
Not a final one, because I knew we were gonna be adjusting it. I could give you a copy.
Should see. Trish talked about...
Do you have a fair to accept? When you calculate the default budget?
Yep.
Is the 4885 in it or not?
No.
Oh, that wouldn't have been the last year's budget.
No, that's a special, that's a special item, that's a benefit if the budget passes, so you wouldn't include it in the...
No, I'm just asking if it was, I'm wondering if that's where the difference in our number is.
Any other changes to the operating budget? Or the default budget?
Well, your number and her number she gave is a difference of 6386 on the default budget.
Yeah, but I think when I did it, I was taking like, that the call for reductions and additions.
Yeah.
To 3193.
Did you go the wrong way?
I think I went...
You went the wrong way.
I went the wrong way with it.
Okay.
So by taking, subtracting that, add...
So which is the correct number?
So it's 3 million, 863,610.
I will entertain a motion to approve Article 35. Again, these are one of the articles that we need to raise our hands and keep them up till Tony gets to count, because they have to go on the warrant itself. All in favor?
We are in mind that we are going to listen to the public tonight and after the public hearing, if we wish to make any changes at that time, we can.
Yeah, I should point out, what we're going to do from a procedure standpoint, is that somehow, we are not going to adjourn this meeting. We are going to vote to continue it till after the public hearing, in case something comes up. At the public hearing, that may warrant us to change our mind. So, somebody, I already told Judy to remind you, to not ask for a adjournment, but ask for a continuation. So now I entertain a motion on Article 35. No one wants to make a motion to approve the operating budget?
I'll make the motion. Make the motion that we approve Article 35 and the amount of 3,000, 3 million, 942,169.
Second.
With a default budget of?
With a default budget of 3 million, 863,000, 610.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Please erase it, Tony's...
All in favor, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
I'll guess. Motion passes 6 to 1. Seven. How many do we have here?
7.
Okay, let's go back to Article... No, Article 30, first money article, we have not voted. Article 30.
And this basically is going to put the money into a fund that will remain there instead of budgeting it every year.
Correct. They just can take it out of the operating budget. I think that was the intent.
And that can be added to if they use the funds. If they don't use the funds, then it's just there for the next year.
And the interest will accumulate.
I'll make a motion to approve Article 30.
Second.
Got a motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? 31. You have to give some explanation to this one, Trish.
Um, well, basically, the Parks and Rec are going to timber the trees at the ball field, and we've got an estimate of around 20,000 that the trees, that they can get from funds for that, which the funds they want to use towards any pre-construction items or designs for the future building that the Parks and Rec director would like to put down there. I sent this information to DRA, and I sent it to Rick. Actually, I sent it to Rick first, and we got two ways to write the article. I forwarded it to DRA, the whole email, and they readjusted it and sent us this type of language as a non-lapsing account. So any money that we receive, well, anything that you raise and appropriate is offset by the sale of the timber. So say you only receive 15,000, then when DRA comes to do our tax rate next year, they do an adjustment from that calculation. If we receive more than 20,000, that 5,000 can't be spent, or whatever you receive more than can't be spent at all, it needs to just stay in the general fund and go into the unreserved fund balance.
So the funds from the forest will be there, will go to the general fund. The funds for the trees will go to the general fund.
Right.
No, the funds for the trees are going into this account.
Non-lapsing account.
Why do we have to raise and appropriate the money? If we're gonna get the money from the sale of the timber, why do we have to raise and appropriate it?
So we can be started, right?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because the whole purpose of this, when it began, was to cut the trees, to get the money, to do some, do the survey down there. But then they decided to do the survey first, and you took the money out, you encumbered money from this year's budget to do it.
Right.
So, now the survey's done, why can't we just cut the trees and put the money from it in the account? Why do we have to raise and appropriate it first?
Well, they want, they want the money to be used for specific use. They want the money to, to stay. If you don't raise it into an article, they cut trees down, their report just wouldn't, the operating budget couldn't be used for anything. So they want to be able to use it towards designing of the...
I understand that, but why do we have to raise and appropriate the money? Why can't we just use the money from the trees to do that? Why do we have to raise and appropriate it, plus get the money from the trees?
I don't know how you word it, if you didn't raise and appropriate.
Yeah, that, that, I think that's your wording. In other words, it's the same thing we talked about before with the sewer. You can't spend $20,000 from the timber harvest if you don't appropriate it in your warrant or in, in your budget. Because if you, if you don't have that language, whatever revenue you get from that timber is gonna go right to the general fund, gonna, gonna go to surplus.
So at the end, when we have, say, when you do your final occipital thing, passes, and then you go, at the end of the year, when we do the tax rate and stuff, you've now gotten the money to offset that, raise and appropriate it enough.
I think the way this is gonna work is that we're gonna get $20,000 from the taxpayers to be spent. And if the timber harvest is a lot less than that, they're gonna have the 20,000 anyway, and the taxpayers will make up the difference. I'm looking at it not in the legality way, but just the functional way. We're gonna have $20,000 from either the taxpayers or the timber. If we get $8,000 for the timber, they're still gonna have a fund of 20. And it looks to me like it's, it's just, we don't know the number. Originally, a month ago, that little area was described as being maybe 18 acres. And since the December meetings, the maps online have come out and allowed us to actually online determine that area with the computer. And maybe it's somewhere between 6 and 12 acres, 12 acres being pretty much everything, every, every tree. I, I'm just worried that that bid is gonna come in very low, like maybe 8,000.
Then that's all you'd be able to spend. You would not be able to spend the 20,000, is what DRA and Rick told me.
Well, when this...
DRA says you can only spend what you raise, what you actually get from the sale of the trees, you can't spend the 20,000.
I can't understand why it says we're...
They are raising them.
You're raising and appropriating 20.
But they told me that you could only spend what you actually get from the sale of trees.
So it would only be 20 if your timber sale was 20. If your timber sale was 8, it'd be 8.
That goes to...
Why couldn't they just create a line in the budget to put the money into from the tree harvest?
Well, they couldn't, they couldn't do that, but what, all right, explain to me then, um... Parks and Rec has a revolving fund, is that correct? The activity money goes in and out of?
They have a fund, uh, it's revolving, a revolving fund, yes.
A revolving fund. Why couldn't we just set up a revolving fund? And the money from the, whatever we get from the tree harvest goes into the revolving fund? Why do we have to raise and appropriate it?
Well, we couldn't pay the bill, really. They couldn't pay the bill.
We don't have a bill to pay.
Oh, we have to pay, that's right.
Right, and they encumbered the money for the survey from the town budget this year.
And, and they just got 3,000 last night as a contribution from, from the conservation fund.
But that goes back to the general fund, I would assume.
I thought it was gonna make up part of that...
Well, they've already paid, they've already paid for the survey.
No, we haven't paid for it yet.
It's not finished.
You've already encumbered, you've...
You've encumbered the funds.
So why do you need 3,000 more from the conservation commission? You've encumbered the funds.
The way I understood it, when we voted last night, was that there's 8,500 encumbered. Part of that's gonna come from the town road department, from their surplus. The rest of it would come from Parks and Rec. However, the rest of it will be less from Parks and Rec, because the conservation, pending a legal review of it, we put that as a condition. We voted to put in 3,000. So that would give Parks and Rec 3,000 more, because we're contributing.
Why do they give them 3,000?
No, no, it wouldn't give them 3,000 more. And what it's gonna do is, if you've encumbered 8,500, and it's strictly for just land tech, because that's the contract we have, and you take 3,000 of the conservation commission, then the rest of that money that was encumbered will just go back into the general fund.
Just go back to the general fund.
It'll just go into the unreserved fund balance at the end of the year. It can't be used for any other purpose but that survey.
That goes back.
What was the motion at the selectmen's meeting? Was the motion to encumber the funds to pay for the survey? Yes. And you have the funds to do that with in the town budget?
Right.
Then there's no need of getting any money from the conservation commission? That money's supposed to be for conservation.
We need the conservation commission.
But right now, we gotta talk about this 2,000. But really, now, we gotta talk about this point though. This wording is very confusing.
As usual with DRA.
Because it definitely says to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand.
If this was money being put in a revolving fund and it was going to come from the sale of the logs, I would not have a problem. But we have sat here, we started out in, what, September? This budget, the school, the school board and the selectmen came in front of the budget committee, did a review, and we sat, and they sat here and they said, "Please keep your budgets as tight as possible. Do the best you can by the townspeople." And the school board, I know, went back and reviewed and reviewed and reviewed. And I know the selectmen did too, because they had many meetings, as many as we did, to find areas to cut. We, as a budget committee, have been talking about, and the selectmen have been talking about, and the school board have been talking about, where do we cut services? The selectmen are talking about cutting benefits and cutting time from our town employees. We've sat here and talked about, maybe we shouldn't be funding capital reserve articles because it's not the right time, the economy's so bad. Something is wrong with this picture. When we're talking about building a Parks and Rec building before the town hall is finished, the public safety building is finished, the union building is finished, and in an economy like this, when we're talking about cutting capital reserves on our fire trucks, on our highways, on our bridges, something is not right here. And I don't think that this is the time to be bringing something like this forward. I would love to have a Parks and Rec building in this town. I think it would be great for the community and great for the kids. But I think it's very poor timing.
If, you have, some's gotta explain. Because I'm looking at this article, I'm looking at it much the way we had a discussion related to the SAU grant recognition. Where my concern was, if you remember, on the budget, on the budget committee, that if it was in the SAU's warrant article to raise and appropriate, I don't remember the number, I'm just gonna throw out a number. Let's say it was thirty thousand dollars. And at the same time, we were gonna get a grant to cover that expense of thirty thousand through the indirect cost, I believe. That we're double hitting the taxpayers. So if you're appropriating twenty thousand, the way this is written, and you're gonna get the money from the forest name, you're getting the money twice. I don't see any way in this warrant article that it's gonna, DRA is not gonna appropriate that money. But they said they wouldn't appropriate it.
That's, that's the wording she gave me. And I don't, I don't know.
You see what I'm saying?
The pastors, who have wording something to the effect of these funds will not be raised by tax dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't think.
But you see, you see what I'm saying?
Why can't it be a revolving account, just like the activity fund?
See, I don't understand that, so maybe it can be, Judy, I don't understand how that works.
So when the money is received from the logging, it goes into the revolving account and takes care of it? There's no money raised? We did that with something else and I'm trying to, I'm racking my brain trying to think of what it was.
The only, the only peculiar thing about that, I kind of agree with Judy's thought. The only peculiar thing is...
That's peculiar because you agree with me or something?
No, I agree with what you're saying. The only peculiar thing about the thought is that you're taking like a five dollar registration kid, kid money and mixing it with timber money.
No, I'm not saying to use that fund, set up a revolving fund.
A new, a new fund like that.
Yeah, a new revolving fund. I wouldn't wanna mix it with the activity money next year.
Okay, so it'd be separate, we'd have to do that.
But am I, am I the only one seeing that we'd be double dipping?
No, that's what I'm saying.
Well, howie, my question is, on the planning board, if, if we're gonna do TRC meetings and bill an applicant for our planner time, we still appropriate the money for the planner.
Because you have an expense that you need to pay. That planner is gonna send you a bill. Here, the logger is not gonna send you a bill. He's gonna get paid out of the, correct me if I'm wrong, proceeds of whatever he has.
But, but we have a bill that we pay with the raise and appropriate amount, but we get money, we get a check from the applicant that offsets it.
Right, but you've got a bill. See, the difference is you've got a bill to pay. As a planning board, and that's where I see, there's a difference between getting a bill and having to pay it and then for, charge the applicant. I can see that, that's a pass through. You know, we're paying the expense, somebody else is gonna reimburse us for that, for that bill. But here, if I understand this correctly, Peter's here, he can help. When a logger goes in to log the ball field, he's not gonna charge us, he's not gonna...
Who goes in?
The logger.
Right.
He's not gonna send us a bill, right? So, but instead, he's gonna send us a check. So if he's not gonna bill us, we're gonna get a check, yet we're still gonna at the same time bill the community, if you will, tax the community twenty thousand.
Although, the one, there's one word I kind of think we might strike, and that's the part where it says "survey", because I think we've sort of already dealt with that in a way. I don't know, you know, that was already dealt with last year.
We did talk about that when the selectmen had reviewed that article. And they think that at some point you might have other surveys that need to be done on that property as far as wetlands and that kind of stuff. So they wanted to leave the wording, that wording, survey in there just in case something more survey is to be done, you can't do any more survey. So, I mean, all I can tell you is that, I mean...
I must be missing something. Some, I, I don't understand non-lapsing, how that would differ from any other appropriation. I mean, personally, I'm not against the project at all, you know, but I, I am against double billing, if you will. And that's what it sounds like, this article do it. Tell me I'm missing something.
I'm sorry, Dr. Lee, how, what do you mean double billing? How, where is this coming from?
Okay, this, this Article thirty-one says to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars. So we want the taxpayers to pay us twenty thousand dollars.
The appropriation to be offset by the sale of the timber. And it has some, it must have something to do with that offset of the sale, sale of the timber, to offset that amount.
But it, but it doesn't limit, it doesn't seem to limit it to the amount of what the harvest produces. There's still twenty thousand dollars there to spend. It doesn't, it doesn't have anything in there limiting to whatever, whatever proceeds come from the logging operation.
I did specifically ask her, she's the one that is our contact, and that's what I said, "What happens if we only get fifteen?" And she said, "Well, then you are only allowed to spend fifteen." And I don't know...
And if you cover beyond the twenty, goes to the general fund?
Right, but if you, if you appropriate twenty thousand dollars and you're gonna, and you're gonna cover it with the timber harvest and that comes out to be five thousand, you're gonna put five thousand against this and you're, you're still gonna spend the twenty thousand, but you're not gonna get it all back through the timber harvest. You know, you're gonna have the money there to spend and there's, there's no limitation on this to, to spend only the amount that is generated by the sale of the trees or the logging.
In spite of what DRA says, I'm, I have to agree with Jerry. The average voter who looks at this article is gonna think it's twenty thousand dollars. And it's only gonna be offset if the amount is twenty thousand. That's what the voter's gonna think.
Well, you kind of have to put an amount there, so, and you just can't leave it blank saying that we're gonna take the money to add up, to pay whatever goes to fall away.
You have to have some sort of figure.
Because you have an uncertain amount.
And the board discussed this, whether to reduce it or to leave it, and they decided at the twenty.
Well, some of the, Peter, Peter's actually a lot of site, has a lot of experience with logging and forestry and stuff like that. He's pretty confident that we're gonna yield that amount of money.
Well, that's valuable too, I mean, that's what I heard, hopefully.
I guess the question would be, though, what if you don't yield that kind of money? There's no language in here that limits it to whatever the harvest of the, of the property generates. If you raise and appropriate the money, then you can, you can spend it.
Well, I would, well, for me, I wouldn't let him spend it. If you have fifteen thousand dollars, I'm not gonna let him go off and get a survey or pre-construction work for anything more than fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it's important to have a lot of these things in writing.
You know, I mean, it's very, you know, it's just that somebody said it, conquer.
Is there any reason, Mark, why you couldn't have done, just opened a revolving account to have this logging money deposited in?
Because we wanted to get it done before budget process, I mean, before we had the vote.
How can you do, how can you commit town dollars to something before people vote on it?
You can't commit town dollars to anything. They're gonna go up there and timber that and we're gonna get the proceeds from it. It's not money we're wasting taxation on that, in that situation, we saw this too.
So we gotta get the logging money first, before we spend anything else.
But we had to spend ten thousand dollars to survey it, to log it. So we did spend ten thousand dollars.
But there's gonna be some additional survey costs. You're gonna have, you know, when you, when you get the building in there and everything, you gotta have, you know, the design survey, the setbacks, all that. I think one of the things about logically duty, the idea of the survey, to be honest with you, is mine, because I would not recommend doing a timber harvest on a piece of property where the boundaries are uncertain. That's only asking for trouble. So we thought, why put the cart before the horse? Let's get a survey done, which, to me, the town is remiss if it doesn't have this property surveyed. Why would you own something and not take care of it, not have a survey? That, I think, is a failure of the town's power, is power of inventory. If you're a business, you have an inventory. So what the idea was, there's mature timber out there, the stand needs to be thin. There's no doubt about that, in my eyes, anyway. You look at the pineal on the road, it's very crowded, there's nothing going underneath. Trees are standing dead because of the low crowded conditions. You go and you thin it out. The idea was, use the money from the forestry job to offset the money we spent on the survey so it's not increasing anybody's tax base here. You're using it.
Yeah, I, I get all that and I understand what you're trying to do. I guess I'm trying to just figure out, what's the hurry? Why couldn't we have made, why couldn't we have had a warrant article in this year for ten thousand dollars to do the survey and find out if people were even interested in going in this direction before spending money?
I think the harvest word from the fact that we had, Parks and Rec building was inadequate for the, for their purposes and they were looking around for another facility, this seemed to be a logical spot. If you're gonna do a timber harvest on that property, you better do it in the winter time.
So we could've done it next winter? I just, I guess I don't understand where the, where the...
That's exactly what, you're right, we didn't want to put it off for a year. Wayne didn't want to put it off for a year. We didn't want to put it off for a year. We're extending the stay of the food pantry in that building for another year. You know, we're just trying to be proactive on this and how to put the burden of pantry pay by using this timber money to offset some of these fees. You know what, you remember when we put the ball fields down there? What had happened is we wouldn't get all that timber money, then we couldn't use it for any of the construction of the ball fields because it wasn't, we didn't have a warrant out there saying...
Yeah, I'm just asking why it can't be a revolving account, why we have to raise and appropriate it. And I guess I've gotta go back because neither one of you here when I...
Because we don't, we don't know what the figure is, right?
You don't need to know what the figure is to open a revolving account.
We can't, you know, if you wanted us to reduce that down to fifteen...
Don't we have a revolving account with you?
We created one.
What's the difference? We didn't know how much was going to be going into that account. It's from what, what's it from? Where's that money coming from?
Fees and details.
Please leave the details.
All right, we had no idea how much that money is. So why can't we open a revolving account just like we did for the police department? And not have to raise and appropriate the money?
I think because, maybe because of the one-time fee, one-time cost. We're not gonna have it all the time, it's just gonna be a one-time thing.
First, I'd love to have that revolving account that you're trying to go from my looking at it, because as we discussed, there may be other surveys along the line. It's certainly gonna be other work to be done in the planning of, even if you're not doing a, a community center down there or whatever, there's gonna be work to be done down in that area in the future, so why not?
That's, I'm just trying to figure out why we have to raise and appropriate.
Well, if you had a revolving fund, you could put money into it from other sources besides the tree harvest. I mean, if you got donations or, or anything else that came up, you had a revolving fund, you could put the money right into it.
This is why, Dad, when we talked to DRA about it, when we were talking about the timber money, is we talked about this a lot, what we could do with that money. Well, we'll go back to the general fund, then we could have a warrant out there saying that we're gonna raise and appropriate this amount of money based on that. But this was DRA's recommendations. This is how they wanted us to see it.
And Rick, I mean, it wasn't just one, it was two, two people knowing what we were trying to accomplish that gave us this wording.
As we had talked about on account, we could put money into it and take it out. As I just said, we would advise not to.
Did anyone ask that question, ask how revolving accounts would be set up?
I did not ask revolving. What I asked DRA to come up, I gave, Rick, Rick knew what we were trying to accomplish. So he came up with the original wording. So when I sent it to DRA, I told her that we were gonna timber this land, that we wanted to use the money for the pre-construction stuff of the new building. And this is, this is what they gave us, they didn't mention anything.
So no one ever came, no one ever asked the question about a revolving account?
And we had some discussion about revolving, I do remember that Article twenty-two. Well, let us, let us, but there was a reasoning for us to go with this route.
Look, wait a minute, isn't expend, what's an expendable trust fund? Is that the same?
No.
No.
There was two wording, one was the expendable trust fund. But we decided not to do that. Because you have to be, put it right, you have to put that on the warrant every year and raise and appropriate money for that fund. So they did talk about that one, but again, it was still gonna say to raise and appropriate.
Now, this is a brand-new warrant article. Would they have, be appropriate to have the board of selectmen name these agents to expend this or who's gonna expend the money from this one?
I would think the board of selectmen is agents to expend.
It's not in this warrant, they say that.
It's not worded that way.
That, that was what I originally proposed was then.
They didn't state that on this, to state that we, they stated one of the articles that we had to have that, but they didn't state that on this one.
The one that we just, the Article, Article, it says at the end of it, for the need for us to like to spend.
That was the expendable trust fund?
Right.
I think that the selectmen are the default agents to expend, whether you say it or not. So if you don't want them, you can say it, and if you wanna put it in, it's redundant.
I think it's expended by the legislative body most of the time at, at the deliberative session of the town meeting.
Yes, yes, how much of who can spend this money? Was for a specific purpose, though?
It doesn't matter, they used to write warrant articles all the time for a specific purpose and no one could spend any of it until they went to the next year's town meeting and got the authority to do something.
Is this the, last night, we can consider this and work on it and fix it?
Well, you can do the deliberative session, obviously.
Well, it seems like we've got a lot of questions. Maybe we should, considering the time constraints, maybe we should move on to the rest of the list and...
Well, I, doesn't this have to be decided, if this is going on the warrant? It has to be discussed and voted on tonight?
Has to be discussed and voted on tonight. Yeah, but you're right, I don't see who's gonna expend this money.
I mean, we can add that wording.
In my mind, that's like giving someone a check made out for twenty thousand dollars and just having them say, "We're only gonna spend four thousand of this", and they come back and spend the whole twenty, and they come back and... come back and spend the whole twenty, and they come back and say, well, you, you gave us the money, so, you know, I mean, you know, where's your recourse at that point?
This wording is very poor. I mean, I agree, where I see appropriation will be offset by sale of timber, but it doesn't limit per se what happens if we give ten thousand dollars into the timber, does that allow you to spend twenty thousand?
It should, because we're appropriating twenty.
That's why she wrote in here, it said must be a sum served.
But if we're appropriating twenty, should be up to the spending.
Could we give them the expendable trust fund one, see if they like that, that, I mean, personally, I don't care either one.
Well, the expendable trust...
I have a small time issue on timber, which, what we're not concerned, we want to timber that this year.
You still have to raise and appropriate even for the expendable trust funds.
But it's, it's written more than what they're, what they're asking for.
Is this a little bit clearer?
Well, it says, to see if the town will vote to establish an expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA 3119, to be known as the Parks and Recreation Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of surveying, architectural design, and other pre-construction services for Parks and Rec Building on the Ball Field property. And to raise and appropriate some to go into this fund with such sum coming from the sale of the timber on map and lot, and further to name the board of, that one states, and further to name the board of selectmen as agents to expend.
That's echo a lot clearer.
And she said, an article, an article would have to be put on the warrant every year to raise and appropriate money into this fund. In order to discontinue the fund, an article would have to be put on the warrant asking the voters' approval. If this is a one-time appropriation, I don't think this is the way to go. Also, the suggestion to create a special revenue fund would not be recommended.
I don't see it as a one-time situation. Uh, if this project moves forward, it's possible next year, we would be adding to that fund to make another step.
Again, I, we, we wait a fine minute. If that was clear as a budget committee, I'd be okay with that. I can't speak for the others, but...
He's waiting on raising appropriate.
Any chance we could make about twenty copies of that?
You want me to change, you don't have to change it.
Give me, give me a favor, read that again, please.
Okay. To see if the town will vote to establish an expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA 3119A, to be known as the Parks and Recreation Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of surveying, architectural design, and other pre-construction services for Parks and Recreation Building on the Ball Field property. And to raise and appropriate the amount that you want to go into this fund with such sum coming from the sale of timber on map number, lot number, and further to name the board of selectmen as agents to expend.
So if I, if I hear, if I interpret this right, that somebody jumped on me from law, that money, it says raise and appropriate, but it's not from taxation, strictly from the sale of timber?
No, it is from taxation. It'd be offset by the sale of the timber.
That's what this one is.
Yeah, the other one is too. Is if, if it's raised and appropriate, it's going to be, uh, from taxpayer money, and it's still going to be offset, but it's going into a trust. The only difference is that's going into a trust, this is not.
But then this does say with such sum coming from the sale of timber.
Coming from, from the sale of timber. Well, this doesn't.
Well, the problem with that one...
It's offset.
Well, the problem, the problem with that one is that we don't, if you don't have twenty thousand dollars, if the sale of timber is worth six, then you're going to get six in the trust fund.
Well, that's the point.
That's the point.
I, I, I understand that, but...
And this one, that's why, this one is clearly much to me, because I'm not, I can't get an answer that if it is six, do we get twenty, or do we get six? And the way this is written, it seems to me, you get twenty.
Before the public hearing starts, could...
Yeah, this, this, the goal was to get the twenty, and then whatever we had from timber would offset that twenty.
But that was thought...
That's the thought. That, that's the reason it's worded the way it is, is that if, if they needed twenty, they could spend up to twenty, and whatever they got for the sale of the timber would offset this twenty, whether it be six, eight, ten, or fifteen.
That's the way it's written out here.
And that's, that was the intent of the wording on that warrant article. Now, I came in late, but what's the issue is, we don't have agents to expend, is that it?
Well, that's part of it. Part of it was clarity, lack of clarity in the article in total.
Well, Rick wrote the thing both ways, and the, and the Parks and Rec Budget Committee liked this one better, because we don't know what the timber is worth, and we're assuming if we, whatever we got for the timber would come back into the general fund, and this would give them the ability to spend up to twenty if they needed it.
Regardless of whether the timber was worth twenty or not.
Yes, exactly.
So it could be wet down there, and we could have rotten timber in the center, and it not be worth anything.
Well, over a year or two, it could be worth a million.
Yeah.
That's a crap shoot.
Yeah.
This is what I'm saying. The idea of keeping it twenty to read was so that, if you're going to put this up as a bidding process, you don't really want to put your number down there, that's whatever number you're looking for, because that sets the goal right there. So anybody that's going to make a bid is going to, obviously, can't bid there.
Pete has walked that, and he knows, he has an idea in his mind what that timber is worth.
So...
But he doesn't want to come out and publicly say, I think it's worth this much money, because we haven't put it out to bid yet.
I think that would be unfair practices, if you specified it now, and anybody who's bidding would know what you're making of it. I mean, why have a bidding process?
Is there any way, before the public hearing starts, we could get a copy of last year's wording on the police department's, um, could someone run down and just grab that?
The article that Teresa was reading has, it sounds really good, and I, I see the differences. The one she was reading would give us whatever the timber harvest was, period. Not twenty, but whatever the timber yield was. But the problem is, it says to be funded by timber, which means every year you got to go find more timber, because it doesn't seem to allow for any other funding method.
Can't be added to.
So we'd have to change that.
But you may get other sources of, of funding too, so if you had that revolving fund and you could deposit the money into it, that would be, that would be an advantage to doing it through that revolving fund. But this other bottom line in this looks to me like it's a commitment to finish this building by December 31st, 2016. I don't know if that's just the expiration date of the, of the warrant article, or it looks to me like it's a commitment to, to get this job done in five years.
I think it just dumps the money back.
Yeah.
If, if you clean related a lot of money and the project didn't fly, it would dump back.
I guess I'm just concerned about what the rush is.
Uh, I think what I would recommend us doing is, uh, holding off on this, just because the public is here, uh, we are going to have to continue it through this meeting afterwards, anyway, so we can continue our discussion. Uh, most of the public has been here for our discussion on this warrant article, so they know that we haven't reached a decision yet. Uh, the only other money article which we need to vote on tonight is Article 33, which I will inform you that we had already voted on as a capital outlay, uh, article voted going through the budget. That was the 50-50 highway safety grant for the chief for the, uh, video, updated video camera. We'd already voted on that previously.
Holly, are we going to read, are we going to discuss Article 31 again? Is that...
After the public hearing.
Uh, can I make a suggestion that somebody call Wayne Robinson and get him in here, so he can be part of that discussion?
Yeah.
He's in a meeting right now.
Yes. Okay, what I'd like to do is suspend the, like, somebody make...
I'll make a motion to continue the budget committee meeting after the conclusion of the public hearing, for the purposes of reviewing the budget and all warrants.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Both? Welcome, everyone. This isn't church, you don't have to sit up from the back. Yeah, well, I know you guys won't, but the others... But I want to tell you, the chief who's got batteries, keep an eye on all you guys. Because everybody, there's, there was a handout over on the table there. Did everyone get a copy? Okay, uh, as part of the budget, just to remind everybody on the, the process that we're going to go through here, the purpose of the public hearing is to go through all money warrant articles, just money warrant articles, with the budget committee. And if you're input by experience, uh, we, as a budget committee, will be after the input that we have reviewed. And if any committee member wishes to make a amendment, change, whatever, to any of the articles or the budgets, after the public input, we will do so. Now, remember one thing, that we still have the deliberative session, uh, coming up, and for the town, that is February 5th at seven o'clock. See, you can go. For the school, it's February 11th at seven o'clock, at the school. Town is here. And at that time, changes again can be recommended, from the, for that time. We're asking for, today is your input. So as you will go to, first, money warrant article is Article 20. This has to do with the ambulance capital reserve fund as previously established. Just for your certification, so you know what we're doing, uh, this is any smaller number we'll read. We currently have fifteen thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars cash on November 30th in a trust fund. Questions or issues on Article 20?
How much do you do ambulance costs? How many years do we have to do this?
The ambulance, lately, we've been running about seven years, and, um, I think the last one...
Hundred fifty?
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty.
Five years out of it.
By the time you outfit them with the defibrillators and everything else, they're, they're an expensive pieces. The defibrillators and everything else we have to put in them, uh, pretty expensive, but, uh, we were on a five-year schedule. We done, I mean, seven years, we done the five now?
Yeah.
Article 21, to see if we'll raise an appropriate sum of hundred and five thousand to add to the bridge constructing capital reserve fund. Uh, I think it's appropriate that, you understand, we had a lot of discussion at the budget committee meeting regarding, uh, the bridges and the highway projects and so forth. And because of the project out on North Wakefield Road, um, the bridge out there being such really bad shape, we felt it necessary to move money from the highway projects to the bridge to get that bridge fixed as soon as possible. And I don't know where we stand on that currently. The bridge at North Wakefield Road, we've got an estimate, right?
Yeah, I think it was around hundred, yeah, about one forty. That's the estimate Dan had gotten from the culvert place that did the replacement of the culvert on Fire and Pond Road. And the estimate we got from the state bridge group was about nine hundred sixty-five thousand. So we opted to go this way.
And we've currently got forty-four thousand in the font. But that bridge has been earmarked, what do they do, red jacket? Is that what they do?
Yes. Weight limit is very low now, and it's a red flag.
Are there any other bridges in town that need to be fixed?
Then she asked if any other bridges need to be fixed, and...
There's currently one other one that's closed in Union, but they have access through another way in.
Do we still have, what do you do with Canal Road with a weight, weight restriction, correct?
That's down the passenger vehicles only.
So we have, we have infrastructure that is hurting in a number of places. But the public should know that we moved, and I don't remember the exact dollar amount, from the highway department to this fund, so not to hit the goal. We often set the price, selectmen and county minister set the price, and, okay, let's just work on the bridge and lock the road.
About seventy-seven thousand you need to get the highway budget to put into the bridges.
Well, does it look like we're about going to be five thousand short then? What do we, what do we have in here?
Forty-four thousand. This is the one.
Okay. All right, I'm looking at you.
Call it.
We've got enough then.
Yeah.
What's the contribution that the state makes after this bridge is ordained?
Not, if we don't, if we go this way, the state makes no contribution. If we go to nine hundred sixty-five thousand through, they make eighty, I think it's about eighty-eight percent, but it takes seven to eight years to get your money back. So we have to spend it.
Excuse me. Does that include we won't pay North Wakefield Road while the bridge is being rebuilt?
Yes.
When that nine hundred and eighty thousand?
Nine hundred and sixty.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 21? Article 22, fire truck capital reserve fund, adding twenty-five thousand to it. I wish you could see some of the size of this preference. Thank you. Somebody I know just had a birthday yesterday. It's currently three hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Fire truck reserve? Hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five. Keep reading with us.
I'm sorry, what was the balance then?
Hundred, hundred and sixty, uh, call it a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Hundred and sixty-six thousand. As you know, we're doing the same thing with Firefox, police cruisers, the, uh, town trucks, the ambulance, we do a reserve all the time, so not to hit the, uh, taxpayers with one big spike every year. Dick?
What's the Fire Department's projection for additional apparatus to be added to the fire at the town within the next ten years?
President Selectman's got the list.
He's got a good capital officer going in that even goes further than that, I believe.
I guess the, well, you know, you would know better than me, the, going over these camp roads takes, takes a beating on some of the tankers and so forth.
When, when we had the last budget meeting, Dick, we asked the question on the, and he said within about three to four years, he wanted to reduce two trucks and, and buy a new tanker. And, and I don't know what goes past that, but the next thing...
Does he, any, in purchase of tanker or is it...
He was going to reduce two of the, uh, get rid of two trucks and buy one tanker within the next four years, but I don't, I don't know what he had past that, but we asked him what the next vehicle he wanted to buy, and it was a tanker within four years.
What sizes are they going to have, you know?
I didn't ask him that, Dick, I'm not sure.
I think three thousand gallons.
Three thousand?
This isn't the typical amount that we put in this warrant article, it's been cut drastically because we economy...
Normally, we expect close to a hundred thousand. Any other comments on the fire trucks that will go to police cruiser? We've got a grand total of nine hundred dollars in that account, so this particular amount will buy a new cruiser, is basically what we're doing. We rotate a...
I've got a question for the chief. Um, I keep reading that we're not going to be able to purchase support, uh, cars anymore. What, what do you plan on the bio? And, and is it going to be more expensive if we start converting all our machines over to a different make?
Most of the radios events will go over to another console. I think they'll change the basic, uh... I think they'll change the basic cage. Depending on how the four-by-four's doing in 2012, we may run out of objects in 2011. They may go one more year after that, I don't know. And depending on when the four-by-four is, maybe definitely be the year of the four-by-four. There's no real real good item in that show. But the Dodge is still really well-run. And then they're also looking at a couple of companies to kind of, you know, the projects going on. Something may emerge within the next year or so.
So you're gonna buy a Crown Vic this year?
Crown Vic this year, maybe the last one.
Dick? The town, I believe, collects $10 an hour for food from private heat there. Close to the year, politicians in town take in that $10 an hour. And where does that money go? Does it go back to the general fund, or is it applied for the purchase of the new cruiser?
It actually goes to the revolving fund, am I correct, Chief?
Yes.
The revolving fund was approved last year to purchase supplies and so forth for the police department.
How much is involved in that returning to you?
You have to ask the chief.
I don't know what we're up to yet. We just, we're just trying to get around it and I'm not sure what it's up to. Where it's probably, you know, maybe up to the around $4,000 or so. But that account, basically, we make a little bit of profit on each least detail. After we get, after we build a company and the bill comes back in, that goes into that account. And eventually, at the servants' discretion, they can move those funds to apply on these cruisers. So one of the years will have a lesser figure on a warrant article because we can take the money out of that. So maybe the year that we're looking at a four-by-four, which is a bit more expensive, might be the year we apply those funds to that and make that, kind of reduce that. But in the meantime, that money's, what is committed is built on that account.
Yeah, we've only had it for a year.
Right, you gotta lag on, well, we've only actually had it from April 1st because up until April 1st, we were starting the old system. And so any details from April 1st forward were filled. And then I believe that probably all came down to all the outstanding, but I'm not sure exactly what this funds up and down.
They quit on police cruiser. Technology fund. We currently have $10,000 in the technology fund. Again, the numbers that I'm giving you are reminding you, you don't remember numbers. We have not seen our December spreadsheet yet. The emergency management capital reserve fund, again, this is a new fund from last year. We have above $2,000 in that fund.
What things typically need to be blocked, you asked?
The chief could probably tell you, but in a case of putting up people at the fire station, purchasing supplies and food to keep them sheltered and safe.
Basically, traditionally, we had a year of emergency. And so what would typically happen is you never had an emergency lot enough to draw your money out of. So you just raised it, so you have enough, and then you put that, and you didn't use it in my way. So what the idea was that if we actually had an emergency of significant importance, we might need a lot more than $1,500 basis points. So if we have, say, like an ice storm for three weeks or something like that, then we'll be looking at food for the shelter, you know, things like that for the generator, you know, potential, you know, if it's a flood, we'll be buying ice cream bags, incidentally, buying droughts. Anything that's related to an emergency, which could also be buying droughts, jumping in the hole or washing out there, is a way to do it. But the idea is, once we get it up to a point where it's a workable level...
But what is the point, what do we have for money? If we have no emergency, how long will we have?
I think if we go up around the $10,000 range, it's probably plenty of money to address any emergency. Of course, that may come up from someone else and say, "Well, we probably need a little more change." Say, "We don't need that much." But if we put in about $1,700 a year, we go, you know, about five years or so, we'll probably feel comfortable for anything that comes up if you're around that.
Does the town have some kind of a fake general emergency fund? If that isn't enough, do we stop feeding people? Or where does the money come from?
That's why we're doing this, this is all we have.
There is no line item in the budget for emergency management. That's why we came up with this plan to get a reserve fund.
Yeah, I just wondered how much we need to get in there. And if that is not enough, what happens after that?
Well, what happens after that is we'd have to go to the general fund and cut back. Remember, that the budget is a bottom-line budget, and you get to take care of the emergencies. So you'd have to cut back for the rest of the year for some of those houses. You should know that when those emergencies have occurred in the past two years, we've had small ones. The food pantry brings over food to, to help feed people who are staying at the fire station. Who knows what the right number is? All you have to do is look at Australia and say, "Who?" Any other questions on emergency management capital reserve? Invasive species, we've got about $24,000 in there currently. But we spent almost that much this year on the various lakes. Three lakes, was it? Kenny?
Yes.
Last year, the policy was more or less established. We buy money into this fund, result in utilizing to hire people to monitor the ramps. Is this practice gonna continue? Because my understanding was initially, the money was there to eradicate the weed problem. And now we're paying different lake organizations to go in and hire people to do this. Seems to me that the lakes, the association on the lakes should come up with the money to support the weed watchers, or it should be done on a volunteer basis. That's why the fund is so low this year, is we pay to have people sit down and put the boats.
Well, I know 20, 22,000, or 11,000 went to buy a boat to pull the stuff for the, I know that was on Boll's. So that wasn't for, I mean, I would rather have, I'd rather pay for the preventative than wait till it gets there.
I agree with you, Hallie. The only thing is, and I think you know as well as I do, living on a lake, we certainly could come up with enough people and find another pond that would cover the sun without a truck. And I think most of your other lakes would do that. Great East Lake pays their weed watchers out of their funds. If one lake gets it, it's only fair that the other seven lakes should receive the funds. And obviously, there isn't gonna be enough money. But you've got a problem on Boll's, you've got a problem on Boll's. You've had a problem on Great East. Pioneer, that came up with a basic problem, which is wasn't hazardous. But the problems are there, and the money isn't large enough to cover all seven lakes in height. So volunteerism is still a good thing. If we don't lean back on that and come on volunteers, we're gonna go broke a bit.
I don't disagree. I think, because there are funds out there to give, but the majority of the money spent last year was on equipment.
Well, I think there was 10,000 or 12,000 that local lake received for the higher watch. Wasn't that high? Was it close to that?
About $1,000.
I was saying, I thought it was less than $1,000.
No, no.
I made you wrong.
$12,000.
Seventeen hundred.
It was less than $5,000, close to that, less than $5,000.
Well, I'll take your word for it. My number is...
Level Lake and Boll's Lake was making, Bello Lake, I think it was like $7,000, $8,000.
Both were 11, I thought. Weren't they both 11?
All were 11, so the, oh, I think Level Lake Association, is there a technical?
Four?
I don't think it was that.
I thought Level Lake got a couple thousand, and then Bello and Boll's came in, I think at one meeting. And I think they, it was around $10,000 or $11,000 between them, but one was four and one was six.
One was a little by itself, I know.
I think so.
Because I know the divers.
The fund wasn't set up just for mill oil either. It was set for invasive species at times. You can use them in the water, just mill.
Personally, I'd just say do more advanced stuff.
The floods, yes, we do have a problem. It costs thousands of dollars, so we have to look at the supply. It's, you can't really compare the other lakes. But Great East Lake, we do, we have weed watchers. We have all kinds of groups out there. We didn't really have, we have a small problem, but it's taking care of right away. It should be prospering in the future. But we have groups, we have boat groups, we have associations that pay for this.
And I think Level Lake's there.
The problem should be the eradication of invasive species, not the pain of the volunteer.
I was at the meeting when Blue Lake came in, and the money that we gave them was just a fraction of what they were spending. And they have an extreme level of volunteerism. They have divers and people that go down. So they're, they're buying this boat that, that vacuums up the weeds, but there's divers down in the water. And they have what could be characterized as a small army of people fighting their problem in that lake. So this wasn't paying, you know, like high salaries or anything like that. This was basically for equipment. But they do have a lot of volunteer workers there. I don't, I don't know if any of this money actually went to pay anybody. I think it was more or less to purchase that boat.
The problem is, is that you do have a big problem. Doesn't it take one for that money to get two trucks? It's impossible. It's very difficult to get front end vision out there.
We didn't put any money in this last year, and we're putting $10,000 in it this year. I think in years before, we had put quite a bit more in that, but we're apparently cutting back because of the economics.
Yes, when we first set that fund up, it was, we were going to put money into that every year to build that up to that $100, $200,000 mark. Because like you're saying, you know, it's just a chip shop. We need, we really look at the whole picture of it. And for instance, what Mr. Magnus said, you know, a lot of these lakes that come and ask for this money have very intensive volunteer programs. They're taking on the bulk of the chores themselves rather than asking the town.
And we should be protecting our lakes because they're our town space.
Dick, there was one individual working at, at Level Lake, I think it was last year or the year before. But that person was paid by a grant that Level Lake had applied for. And it was not paid out of this fund. I don't know if that's the one you're referring to, but there was an individual working there for the summer. But it's my understanding that they applied for and received grant money for that individual.
I think one of the factors for Level Lake that I would say is it has a highly used access point. Pioneer Pond is fortunate for the residents of that lake that there's really not a highly used access point for people generally from lake to lake that might be carrying, you know, debris and mill foil on their props or whatever. So I mean, that's one of those lakes where you want to encourage people to be looking out because of the use of the road map down here. That's, in my view, is well-spent money.
The thing is, Peter, you've got seven lakes in the general lot. It was only x amount of dogs. Now, is it more important to go to the eradication and use of all of these?
Well, look, Mr. Wilson, like I said, access to Pioneer Pond is very difficult to invest for anybody who's not lucky. Access to Level Lake is a lot easier to do.
I agree, boss, from the public. It's easier, Peter. But if you've been out on the road with the grant services the year we are back, there's a constant flow of folks going in and out of that every day. Not to mention the private ones.
There'll be more now.
Now, let the shoe listener rustle for town everybody.
All right. Article 27, cemetery maintenance capital reserve. Currently, there's about $2,200 in there. We'll add a thousand to it. Highway truck safety capital reserve, adding $75,000. And it's got $20,000 there now, roughly. Kenny, is a good-sized truck they want to purchase, right?
Yeah, they're looking to replace the Kenworth in 2012 for $150,000. And as we reviewed the last time, the problem we have of the trucks at the Highway Department are all being replaced year after year, the consecutive years. Because of when the building burnt back in 88-ish or so, we lost all the vehicles. So that means everything's replacing at the same time. So it was facing a mouth 2012, 2014, 16, and 17.
Okay, Article 30, let's skip over one, this non-money article. Capital reserve to establish, a new capital reserve, Forest Fire Management, $2,000. This will be a brand-new capital reserve fund. Kenny, maybe you can talk to that a little bit?
Same as the emergency management fund. Every year, we raise money for that. And if it doesn't get used, it just goes into the general fund. This way, here it'll be established, there it'll be used for that issue.
Question, is that money gonna be spent on equipment or fighting fires?
Actually, fighting the fire. I don't think he has any equipment money. That would all be in his other budget.
Okay.
Kenny, should this not be a revolving fund as well? Because don't, on forest fires, aren't you reimbursed?
Some of them are, yeah.
So if it was a revolving fund, then the money could go back into, into the fund and instead of the general fund?
We could put it right back into that? Versus just going back into the general fund with the rest of it?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it should be revolving.
Because that way it could be self-fulfilling. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Did you find the wording on the police one?
Yep.
Did you make copies for us?
Yep. Article 80, thank you.
Article 31, for those of you that, we came in while we were holding our budget meeting, we were having a little lengthy discussion on the wording of this trying to get any help. You can tell from the lawyer wrote it, sorry. The idea here, actually, I'll let Wayne.
The article is written two different ways. And initially, and when we went over the wording on both of them, actually thought this one would be clearer to the people that were voting than the other way. And the other one, I know Mark has on his computer, I can read it if I can read it.
I think someone drew this, the Expendable Trust.
Yeah, yeah.
The purpose is to do, to log the, I'm gonna paraphrase, see if I can. Log the ball field lot.
That money?
And use that money to...
Refund it.
To do some architectural designs, pre-construction services for, to see feasibility of doing a building.
Correct.
You can notice that there's no Budget Committee recommendation on here. That's because we still hadn't figured out the wording that was agreeable to us. Although we understood, if that's a better way. So this will be up for discussion following the public meeting.
I'll just comment, being Wayne was talking, that he had no objection to the revolving fund. He does have a revolving fund now, but it's set up for all the other programs.
You want to keep it separate?
We want to keep it separate.
Yes.
I personally don't have a problem with the revolving money and the degree of wording. What we do, we definitely want to make sure that we have the funding to get the whole work. So it eliminates us from doing that.
And definitely need to be specific, I think, to send the revolving.
This is very specific, the one last year.
Yeah.
I have a question, Wayne or anyone can answer it. On our fund balances for the trust funds, the first one there is a ball field reserve. How was that one set up?
That, that was just a regular cross fund that's got zeroed in it now. That was to, to create some of the new ball field?
That was created probably 12 years ago, 12, 15 years ago. And I think there was maybe $500 or $600 left in that of all. Three or four years ago, and we, you know, these guys have been out, you know, Howard, Danny, I can't remember which one, so we gotta zero that out because it's been carrying over with that, you know, $500 or $600 since.
That was set up...
Yeah, I think it was closer to 15 years ago that was set up.
It's been there a long time.
Yeah, and that's particular out of that we could not have the timber money in from the first little, you know, because of the work.
Right.
My issue with that Article 31 though, if that's a revolving fund, don't we have to take out the sale of timber because that would imply to me that the only way we could put money in there is by selling timber?
That's right. That's the purpose.
But is that the only way we want to put money in there is from timber?
Yeah.
Well, then why do we make it revolving? We're only going to cut the timber once, right?
That's where we were coming up with the, the sale of the timber was what was that?
I understand that, Mark, but why would we make it revolving if we're only going to cut the timber once?
Next year, we want to put more money in to take the next increment. We don't have any timber left.
But you can't if it says timber, can you?
If you take the word timber off.
Wouldn't you have to take the word timber off? That's my point, Judy.
If you take that out, I don't think we can put that money into it.
Well, why couldn't you add timber and?
See, I, when I first thought this was just capital reserve items, that we're going to raise appropriate money to, it did, the sale of the timber money could go into the general fund. So it would offset anyway, you know, that tax on me.
I think what we're trying to do is get the one that's going to be the easiest for the taxpayers to
Understand.
Understand when they go in and vote on it, but my concern is if this is revolving, then we have to expand and to make it broader than just the sale of timber, so.
Would it be one word, a one-time sale of timber to contribute towards or to be used to offset the cost of survey, the property?
You are not in the contract of the funds to survey the property.
You can't use survey because you've already paid for that coins.
Okay.
Well, the Article 18 on last year's ballot mentions how the revenues are going to come in. We could have the timber plus other certain activities that bring money into it and put it into a revolving
Yeah.
Fund that way. Then you could broaden how the money comes in and
You put the wording such that the timber would be the initial fund mechanism, but other revenues could be added from others.
That's my point. We have to expand on it so it just
Because you don't want to narrow that.
Yeah. We don't want to have a dislimiter to timber.
Right, but when you get to a point where you're beyond the pre-construction services and whatnot that we're coming up with, don't you have to broaden what the expense would be for that as well?
Well, I think at that point, you can't approve.
Right.
You go beyond what the usage is anyway.
Right.
So I think, I think, that's my personal.
When you put timber in that, you should be specific to which timber because we do have a town forest. We may do a cut and it's different timber.
It references the map and lot number.
Yeah, you can put the lot map number.
Yeah, this has the lot map and lot on it right here on 31.
Howard?
Yeah.
If you put something so vague as to say timber happens money to be used or even one-time sale of timber proceeds used to offset development cost of this, I mean, it's kind of vague, but it's covering what needs to be done.
What we don't want, we want two things and again, you know, Rick's going to have to work on the wording of this. We want, one, the revenue from the initial timber to go to create the fund, but we also want to have the capability of accepting revenue from other sources.
Yeah, donation.
That's why we've got to make sure it's, you can get it from private donations. Grants. People off the street.
And that's a good wording, right?
Yeah, it's any revenue.
Yeah, but that's if I can't do what it adds, doing the logging adds to that and any revenue stream there on
Yeah, it could be, that's my point.
For purposes of this warrant article we have here on the table right now, not a revolving account, could you word the one-time sale of timber to be used towards the development of the land down here, town and property?
But then I think you're giving the same problem you just did with the 20, because in order to do that, you need to have an amount certain and you're bad to put the $20,000 in there again.
And you don't want to try to revise a warrant article once you pass it and we don't want two warrant articles.
I'm just looking at this for the first time, this is really confusing. I'm assuming that we're not asking the taxpayers for $20,000?
Yes, you are.
We are? Okay, so then what is the dollar amount that we anticipate making off the sale of the timber?
We don't know.
We haven't put out a committee yet.
Okay, but we would ask
We don't want to post that because that's what you put on committee.
Okay, so basically what you're doing by this article is you're asking the taxpayers to chip in $20,000 and then in addition to that $20,000, you're going to put the money that you may receive from timber, grants, or anything else?
No, it'll be offset.
The offset.
Appropriations to be offset by the sale of timber.
This is very
I agree.
And as a threat, people will know.
It's not just children, it's all, you know, it's all folks, but any given time, wait till
I can tell you right now, well, like right now, during basketball season, we have over 150 kids in basketball alone and that's 12 teams going through the school time to get in the school gym to have practice times and games and get on the school schedule as well. And it's, you know, it's, every season is like that and it just keeps growing and that's just, that's just the children that are in school. There's a lot of other areas that we'd like to be able to touch when we can't, the preschool kids, the adults, seniors, and the way the economy is right now, without, if we had a facility, we could offer more things that would be fun for people to do around here instead of having to go on trips or traveling two hours or an hour and a half or someplace to go someplace else. We could offer a rate account for kids to have, adults, anybody to do something with the facility.
In the interest
It is definitely a community center.
We're not talking about a community center here. Right now, we're talking about this particular one.
But that's what it leads to. In the interest of time, is it possible to get ahold of Rick, see if he's home, ask him if he can come down here and do some wording on our revolving account and we can continue with the rest of the warrant articles in the budget?
Well, some of them is
That's what I'm asking, is it okay? Because we can't vote on it until we have what we want for wording. Right. And is tonight, I mean, how much more can we have another meeting? Then we have to post another public hearing and so if we don't resolve it tonight, it's ...
We have to do it, if we were to make any changes to these articles after this evening, we'd have to hold a public meeting.
Right.
I just forgot the survey that was done, I don't know if you got the numbers, but the senators, people in the town that thought this was a good idea, I feel the senator was pretty hot and
No, not exactly whether it was good, it was
71, 72.
I think it was 71, 72.
Well, yeah, but the only, the only real, the only real survey that matters is in Mark, actually, so, you know, I mean, you can have all the numbers you want, but, you know, when it comes right down to it, it's what happens in Mark. I'm just surprised that this came in so late in the budget season. You know, I mean, this would have been nice to look at three months ago.
If you want to be able to use that money to offset costs.
I guess I'm still confused what the urgency is of the way to do it this year.
Because we wanted the timber this year.
You want to be able to
Raise it, spread it, be too money or sweep it up there.
Okay, so why couldn't we have raised and appropriated $10,000 this coming March to survey it and then done the timbering next year? I need to know, I'm trying to figure out what the urgency is. Is there an end date here or goal date or something of when you want to start constructing something or is there, is there a goal we're heading towards here?
The rest of the, I say, Michael, this is not construction in 2012.
That would be my goal too, and take advantage of the bond rates at this time for things that won't up that much more as well.
And how much is the building going to be again?
We don't, we don't even, we don't know, we're not that far, even though we have an outlook that we want to keep it under and we want to keep it under a million dollars. That actually, the number we talked is 900,000 of the building committee that we put together and to take advantage of the bond rate at what it's at now and the foreseeable, hopefully, you know, what we can tell what might happen next year, so we'll see it doubling or quadrupling in the bond rate. So you'd be looking, if someone had a $300,000 home, you'd be looking about $15 a year to attach this for a building that size, but basically achieve a pizza, you look at a meal.
What size is this building, Mark?
About 12,000 square feet.
Well, but before we get carried away on the building here, the article is not on the budget.
No, but it's the setup for it.
Yeah.
And I'm going to go back to my first original statement. The budget committee and the townspeople have been saying to the school board and the selectmen to cut, to come in with the best possible workable budget you can come in with. I think the school board and I think the selectmen did that.
Good.
And we're sitting here talking about cutting our capital reserve articles to fire trucks and the town hall building and the public safety building and the union building and we're talking about cutting services and we've been, the selectmen have been talking about cutting employee benefits, but then we're turning around and talking about prepping for a million dollar building. Something is wrong, something's not making sense here in this economy. Why are we cutting all these things that are our needs and funding something that's a want? And I know Wayne does an excellent job with Parks and Rec. I know he does a good job. I know kids have great programs and it has nothing to do with Wayne and nothing to do with the programs. It's just a difference between want and need in this economy and I don't think that we should be sitting here telling them, sure, go ahead, spend this and get, get the plans done and get that. And 2012 comes next year and we're in the same economy and they've done all this work and we're going to sit here and say, oh, oh, no, hold on. And they're going to say, but wait a minute, last year you guys gave us the money to do this and we thought that was an okay to go ahead. We're definitely sending a wrong message here tonight and I don't think it's fair to the townspeople.
Again, I guess that's probably, you know, the kind of dovetails of why we didn't want to make it a revolving account, just wanted to make a non-lapse account, we wanted to be able to use that timber money so the taxpayer, if we overheard the taxpayers to press to develop that land, we may not get a building, but at least we got to stop.
You know something, we got to start on the town hall, we got to start on the public safety building. We've got plans to keep finishing and working on those. We've got a building in union we can't rent out because we have to put an elevator in it and we're sitting here and we're talking about what's our tax base, our invasive species line? Well, we've cut that to $10,000. I think we used to put 20 or 25 in it. We're taking road construction money away from the highway department to fund the dilapidated bridges in town. I mean, I could go on. What, there's something wrong. And I would like to see a Parks and Rec community center in town probably just as much as anybody else would. It would be a wonderful thing to have, but it's a want. Right now in this economy, it's a want, it's not a need.
Judy, I think I agree with you and I think probably everyone in this room would have no disagreement with what you're saying, but I voted to partially fund the survey last night and I voted on the basis that the voters will decide whether there's a building or not. And I don't want to vote tonight whether there's a building or not. I just want to vote to give them a chance to do their study, to do their plans, and if they develop a building that is going to have enough use and a reasonable cost, then it's up to the whole body of voters to say yes or no. So I know there's this sinking fund syndrome that we get our, you know, in for a penny, in for a pound and that's something to be wary of, but I'm looking at it as just a small amount of money that we're partially going to salvage from this timber that maybe no one would have cut anyway for a while. But they can't, the voters can't decide whether they want this or not until they know what it is. All I want to do is see some plans and know what it is and I won't make the decision on the building. I'll just have one vote. It's the whole body of the town that will decide based on the plan they come up with.
And at that point, you're going to have $30,000, $40,000 tied up in the plan, then you throw it to voters and say, well, we can't start now because we're at this point. I mean, we got $64,000 invested in plans to redo the upstairs of the public safety building and we, and we got the, we got the plans, we paid for them and, and we haven't gone anywhere with that. So, I mean, you know, you wind up with a lot of money invested and then you get stuck.
It's true, Jerry, but we have some plans for the public safety building which somebody can look at and when we decide to bring that forward, we have a, we have a plan. We have something that you can see that's on black and white paper. But the public safety building was due to be finished by, I think, '09 in the original first place and we haven't been forced to do that just because we had the plans. It's on hold. Judy's right, we're going to put a lot of things on hold. Maybe this will be on hold, but at least I know what I'm talking about because I've seen the plans for that public safety building and if I want to bring it up or we want to discuss it, we have a concrete plan. I think 64 was twice what we needed to spend, but I'm willing to vote for 30,000 and I don't think that's a mandate on me to vote for that building. It's just to look at what the concept is and make an informed decision at the time.
I'll just say, as I agree with respect to Judy Sheehan, and I've mentioned that many times sitting on that committee, but I will respectfully disagree that it's a want, not a need. This country is faced with obesity problems with the children. We hear about it all the time in the news. Senior citizens in this area always, I'm hearing, complain that they have to travel so far for anything they want to do. I think right now, Wayne is pointing to the sea, we have Parks and Rec and the food pantry competing for space. Food pantry has stated that they are dealing with more and more people all the time in part, because like you said, Judy, to this economy. I feel that there's nothing wrong with planning for the future. We're not building something next year, we're talking about trying to build a set of plans just like we did with the school expansion. I think it's just smart to prepare for the future and that's a need, not a want, because this economy is going to rebound. Population is going to grow, seniors are getting older, kids hopefully will have activities. We talked about if we do something at the ball field, put in a track around the field or a walking path where people can not only exercise in the summertime, but they can cross-country speed snowshoe at a place where they may feel safe for parking and replying. This is the type of thing that we are looking for, we're trying to plan for the future. Best way to do it is to get started. Thank you.
Someday, we're going to redo the first floor in this building and when we do that, we're going to have a place, we have to have a place for those offices to go, the town clerk and so forth. I would hope at that time, which no one knows what date that'll be, if we'll be alive, but if we do that, I would like to see that building totally empty with the food pantry having their own building, parks having their own building and all the offices of the town clerk and the tax collector go over to that building and at that point, it'd be empty and waiting for them. We'll need the whole building when we do that or somewhere.
Well, I think we'd all like to see that, but I mean, you know, I mean, to Judy's point, we've got three bridges in town that are barely passable. We've got nine, eight or nine warrant articles for repairs that we need on the school building to, you know, it's a separate budget, but it's still, I would think that keeping the students safe and keeping the investment we have in the school building would be fairly important and like Judy says, we get all these projects that we started and, you know, how many more do you start? How many more do you invest 20, 30, 40,000 dollars in to get started and then, and then not finish them and have seven or eight different projects going on that aren't done?
I have no
But this may not be the appropriate time to discuss this and I wouldn't say anything if it hadn't come out.
You know, with the, now it's morning, it's right now, it's about 9:00, 7:00, people's going out and I cannot see this storm that comes And I cannot see this storm coming coming right around like they're crying down and washing shut that throat. When that happens, then I would think about spending some money. But right now, I'm talking about real tight because it's going to get worse instead of getting better.
I think, and to John's point, the, uh, the president named a debt commission last fall and they came out with their report. And everybody's talking about the economy bouncing back and all that. And, and this debt commission came up with terms like it's going to be a bloodbath in the spring and, and next year when they're talking about the economy. So I guess there's, there's, uh, different opinions on either side of the, uh, either side of the issue. And, and to Judy's point, I think that, you know, we shouldn't really focus on what we absolutely have to do to, to get by.
I want to speak to Jerry's point where you're talking about, uh, plans being fifty, sixty thousand dollar plans and we haven't gotten any. We're not looking to spend that much money on any type of plans. We're not looking to spend any more than that because I feel like that's a waste too when you get up that high. But if, like, like Dave said, you know, if we can come up with a good plan, whether we're able to use it or not right now, we'll have a plan. But we're not looking to spend any more than that. We're not looking to come back next year to ask for more for another plan. You know, that, we've talked to a few different people, just get ideas of what a plan would cost us. And, uh, we feel that that would be more than enough money to get us started.
And, and that, and that starts another project. You know, I mean, and believe me, it's, you know, it's nothing personal or anything like that. It's just, it's just the fact that we start all these projects and we get money tied up in them. And, you know, we, we could finish this building. We could, we could, we could do something with the union building. And there's a lot of projects that, that, that should probably be finished before we, before we take on anymore.
One of the reasons, I think, on the, the timing on this, on this project right now is that we did the survey in this town. And, and we asked the townspeople what they thought was important. The Parks and Rec is the one that bubbled up to the top. And what I think we're attempting to do here is to come up with a three-D plan on what a building may look like with some elevations and something that people can look at. So then we let the voters decide whether or not that survey was really important and, and they, and, and they want to do this. I mean, it, we can sit here and knock this down to zero and then we do a survey next year and we're going to get eighty percent of the people saying, why aren't we doing something with Parks and Rec? If we spent this money and we cut the timber to do it, yeah, the timber belongs to the town and it's taxpayers' timber. I understand that. But it's not like we're taking money out of the general fund to do these plans. We're taking timber money to develop the plans, to show the people what the building might look like and let them make a decision whether or not they want to build this building. I mean, we can, we can argue for three weeks in here on whether or not we need it. I think the voters ought to make the decision, not this group.
Although you're right.
Uh, Peter, what's the price of, of, of that wood?
What, what timber are you talking about? You're talking about white?
Or what on that lot?
This, this, what on that lot? I'm not going to get into the grade of it or anything else because as we talked about before, there's a bidding process that goes along with it. You know, if you're on a current name, you don't throw your hand out and say, geez, now I'm going to raise you when you have a losing hand.
No, that's all right. We're, we're, listen back. What I'm getting at is timber right now is down compared it was five years ago. To give it a finer cut, four, five, four, two and a half thousand. I'll break down this in price.
Timber's down so much, how can you have a new lot logged now?
Was that?
Don't call it that.
Hold on. Thank you, Ben.
I just have a question. I wonder if I can be, be worded as such to remove the twenty thousand dollar amount and just say the sale of timber will go toward this.
That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, to remove the twenty thousand dollars.
Well, if the way it's, we can't, we can't, as I understand from DRA, the Department of the Administration wrote, and they said if we don't put a dollar amount in there, it's not a valid warrant. Unless, so that's why we're looking at alternative ways to set up an alternative funding mechanism to do exactly what you just said.
Because if twenty, if twelve thousand dollars just say comes in from the timber, now the town still has to come up with money to make up the difference. But if you just say the sale of timber, then you can't do that.
Well, we, we, I can't, I won't say we can't. Is it alternative?
Did you get ahold of Rick?
Yeah, Rick did. We hear about eight-thirty. He was in Tupperboro.
So can we move on and then come back to it when he comes?
Yeah.
Can I just say that as a comment, everybody here tonight has really had some good ideas. Um, it seems, just seems to me, uh, the simple way to do this, because I'm in favor of Parks and Rec doing that timber. I, I think that's a good idea and I'm not even thinking about any building. I'm just thinking about what you could get from that timber and, and go on from there. Every step you need to take to get to a building. Um, but if we put it in a revolving account, then people could also donate to that account if you worded it right. And then you'd be able to do the timber, then you'd be able to spend it on the surveys or whatever. But you have to word it similar to what this police department revolving account was last year.
That's all we're asking.
And I think that's a great idea. I think it should be done that way. And Judy, Judy referenced that at the beginning.
I said I have no pri, that's what I'd like to do so that we can, you can move on with it, but it's not costing the taxpayers twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of that so I can see?
Yeah, we're just asking for a chance to be able to get all the technical knowledge together, to put a plan together to present to the people, to give them, to see, you know, what it would entail and, you know, to be able to get a building to scale and, and to present it. So if that's what the people want, that's what we're going to say.
And I don't think the twenty thousand dollars is the way to go. Because that's getting people to, to vote, yes, we're going to spend twenty thousand dollars of our tax money.
Well, I find a twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollar for a plan too much money. People are losing their homes. People are losing their jobs. I don't think this is the time to do it. We need to set priorities. We really don't need it.
The public safety building started with a three-page plan, which I've seen a floor plan and side and front elevation. And they went forward with that with a design build. And, uh, they didn't really spend a lot of money on that first initial plan. It was a fairly specific, but fairly conceptual and very inexpensive.
Yeah, if I could recap, if we're going on Article thirty and Article thirty-one, uh, we were talking about both votes being made into a revolving, a revolving account. Is that correct, Ewan? That's, we need to have Rick here to word this. In, in light of that, I would like to go on to Article thirty-three. Article thirty-three, uh, is a fifty-fifty grant, uh, from the highway safety. It's about for purchase of updated view for our, our police cruisers.
Are we skipping thirty-two then?
Thirty-two is a money, not really a money article. That's, we're only talking, Budget Committee can only talk to, uh, the money articles.
Yeah, but it is a money article.
Oh, it's a lot.
Do we have to vote? I mean, do we have to discuss it because it is a dollar or do we skip over it?
It's not, it's not expenditure, it's an income.
Okay.
So Chief, this is a fifty-fifty grant. So actually, all we're asking for, the townspeople approves, twenty-four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. And can you give a little, just a little bit, uh, more information, what exactly we're going to get for that?
Basically, um, it's kind of a project replacement. We, the cruisers, we run video cameras. Cameras that are, uh, VHS cameras. They're pretty worn out. So, um, the new technology nowadays is DVDs. Uh, so the reason why that I run the video cameras in the cruisers, we use them in prosecution, we use them in a case building. We also know what happened out there. Um, there was a little bit of, you know, something happens during office or whatever, we have to report it. The other issue that we use as far ahead is, um, if we're going to a scene or something like that, or a road or something on the lawn, we put it on end of time when we may capture the person coming the other way. And as we're going to the scene, we'll at least capture the power and plate number or something like that. The video cameras that we have now, they were good when they first came out, but that was DCIs. Um, the other issue was we have to buy a lot of DCI tapes. You get higher and higher the fines and the new site down now with the Gaussors. And in reality, if you did not get this camera, we could function without this camera. The issue is that the equipment is breaking down. We've got one other thing, it's just parts now. Um, with, you know, a DCI camera in my business that's not working, it's parts now. Uh, so we've captured two of them apart now. And so this is replacing that. The other thing that this camera can do is that you don't actually have to have, it has a hot drop. So if you don't have your disk in there, it, and it records all the time that the cruisers out there. So even if the officer did think something was important, later you find out it was, we can go back within a day and go record that event. So, um, the other thing too is, you know, I guess, you know, a tail one has pulled the wall taken a year or two, I don't know. Because it is replacing the two primary control points.
So it's placed with two.
Well, this one's replacing one, but I'm just kidding. A tail one that in a year or two, I might have to remember. So just know that ahead of time.
Well, it's, it's typical technology. How long we've had the DCI ones? My guess is probably five, six years.
About eight. Eight, about eight. Um, it was about eight, well, I'm taking a little longer than the old one. Um, and they've, they're kind of, they're kind of worn, but it's still, it's still kind of working.
Kind of. All right. And the last article is the budget. Article thirty-five. Uh, I will mention, and you can make note of this, we had to make some adjustments to, uh, the operating budget. The workers' comp premium came in higher than we anticipated. Uh, and we took out a, a couple of articles out of the operating budget. So the net is, the operating budget on Article thirty-five should be three million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty thousand with a default budget of three million, eight sixty-three, six ten. And as I think you might have heard me say on the tape, uh, this is the lowest town appropriations total that we've had in the last five years. It's lower than we've had in the last, because two thousand seven, which is all we have. It's lower than every year. Comments? So we're now waiting for it.
No one has any?
I was going to ask you earlier, uh, the safety building, what is it going to be more incredible? I don't have to be more. Um, what are you looking for? Did you plan to do a speaking about?
Public, not public safety building.
Um, delighted, how can you know what they're going to do here?
There was no capital reserve.
I'm sorry, I was.
No. So we're just referencing that in relation to what Parks and Rec is thinking of doing. Yes.
Howie, what, are we going down through that budget?
We can't. I'm, I'm just waiting for any questions. Basically.
I, can I discuss something about this historic heritage budget?
Yep.
I would like to request that our budget, the, um, twenty-five hundred dollars added to it. And this would be, I'm not sure if you can call it contract services, I'd like to call that to start with. You might remember I spoke about this at your last meeting and we were talking about putting it into the planning board budget. It was a little different number. I'd like to just, um, suggest that we add it to our budget and I'll tell you why. Um, it would be for a professional consultant. We have two things that the Heritage Commission needs to do, um, but let me step back a moment. For those who don't know, the Heritage Commission is kind of planning and zoning. And that's why we initially were thinking about putting it under that, that, uh, budget. Uh, but we need this year, in response to requests from the residents of the historic district, um, to redo the, um, look at the, um, rules and regs to that district. They are like twenty years old. Nothing has been done to them. Uh, we need to be more responsive to the residents. It's hard to deal with the issues that need to be dealt with with the, either the way our regulations are currently written. Um, and there is a lot of work that we can do ourselves. Um, but obviously before it goes, before the planning board or the people to propose, we would need to have attorney to do it. But he looks at the legal, um, aspects of the rules, not his, he doesn't have the historical perspective. He's not familiar with, um, the Department of the Interior specifications and guidelines that we're supposed to be using. There's a, there is, um, so what I'd like to propose is ten hours, uh, under a professional. We can do a lot of the work ourselves, but we need to have a professional help us with these, um, guidelines. We actually have scheduled a workshop in two weeks with two people from DHR coming from Congress. During the day at no cost to the town. Um, there's, there is research we can do, but we need ten hours, I feel, of, um, professional. Three hours, two workshops and three hours with, um, with a public work, maybe public anyway, but for the residents of the district to discuss, um, the issues that they have. And so that would be, uh, and I've talked with someone, I have estimates, it's a hundred dollars an hour is the average. Um, actually, it's the, the cost of the one that I would hope we could get. And, and one of the better persons in the state for this purpose. Also, the other fifteen hours or fifteen hundred dollars would be spent to help with the cultural and historic, um, chapter of the master plan. There really is no one presently in town that's able to professionally handle that. It's a totally separate type of chapter. Um, we again can do a lot of the work ourselves. Uh, you probably realize that we do, we have volunteers. We discussed here over thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred hours of volunteer time given, um, for the, for this Heritage Commission. So I really would like to ask if we would consider adding twenty-five hundred dollars to that purpose.
Thank you, Peter. Again, following the closure of the public meeting, we will be continuing our budget meeting that we've kind of left. Hopefully Rick here to help us vote on, kiss a word. We'll vote on any change. Any other public comment before I close the public hearing?
Thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to the line up to see, uh, request for additional funding added under the professional services line. I had a final review that we have used for twenty, uh, two thousand ten. I'm not sure who had, but maybe a little over eleven thousand. It's, uh, ten, six, eight, uh, ten thousand, six hundred eighty-seven thousand fifty cents. Um, that includes some, uh, the Congress that we have for, um, additional services.
Can you stand up, please?
Yeah.
In your corner, Mike, for the way to.
Um, the, the total of your fee to ten thousand, six hundred eighty-seven fifty for the professional services for two thousand ten. Uh, that may not be reflected on your, your sheet yet, but I know that the, uh, final voices were submitted yesterday. Um, because we use that amount within a six-month period, we're estimating that for this coming. Because we use that amount within a six-month period, we're estimating that for this coming year, we could easily go to twenty thousand for our planning board only, professional services. And the reason we're asking for the twenty-five is because we need funding in there that would also be used by the CBA. I conferred with Doug and two thousand, we did the maximum, and we're also looking at three thousand to have in the, the reserve for the TRC funding, because that is something that would have to be paid upfront, and then that's charged back, but it still has to be in there. So we're looking, hoping for a twenty-five thousand dollar mine, professional. The others, we didn't have.
So we've got fifteen thou, we have fifteen thousand there now.
It's in there now.
By the way, for the, for the budget committee we're talking about, general government land use, remember, this is a combined, new combined budget. It's on general government expenses.
So it would be added to that professional service line?
It'd be ten thousand dollars added.
I'm sorry, ten or twenty-five?
Add ten. To make the total twenty-five.
Last year it was third, so it slowed down to five thousand, and it's two, two combined now.
You said this year was ten-six? You said this year was ten-six?
Ten-six-eight-seven fifty cents.
And Howie, I can speak to that a little bit too. I mean, we really got started late with, with the professional service that we hired. Really didn't get started until late May. Right now, he's in full swing, working on the master plan, right now. So he's going to work on it all year. We're going to have to probably cut, you know, cut it back a little bit, but hoping we can get it done. Last year, we were able to be, you know, I think in the later months, we were very frugal, and we, we took him aside, and we even got an estimate from him to do a certain chap, you know, told him this is all we're going to spend, you know, his weather it's right. His ten hours worth of work, we want you to see what you can come up with in ten hours. And did a whole chap tomorrow, and that ten hours worked. So we're, we're working it, working it really hard, but we definitely got to have more than the fifteen thousand that got put into the budget. It was just a mistake, twenty-five thousand, which is five thousand less than last year we really used.
Do you plan to negotiate again per chapter?
Absolutely.
Yes, definitely.
So you did one chapter this year?
Two.
Two.
Also, there's, I just want to add that we completed the two, and they have been adopted, but two more are already started. So in two thousand and ten, have you been actually working on?
Hey, would, would your services, what different departments besides planning are going to use these professional services?
The planning and the CBA, the heritage, the town has come to us and request funding, as well as the town may need to utilize some of our funding. So there's actually four different areas.
What about Conservation Commission is mandated to do an inventory, and, you know, there's a lot of professionals on the board, but they're all working people. Is it possible if they needed twenty-five hundred dollars worth of special professional assistance to do their part of it? Could that work out of your budget too?
I, I would see why not, because when it comes right down to it, the conservation portion is a big piece, but we need to do the planning. So it makes sense if we utilize that.
Lot of, lot of people dipping out the same well.
But I don't understand, you guys who need the three thousand dollars for Parks and Rec, and are you asking twenty-five hundred to some work for the conservation?
We, we, we have a chapter. The Conservation Commission has a section or a chapter that they would be responsible for on the master plan. We're also mandated by state statute to do an inventory of all our conservation items, which are wetlands and marshes and things like that. And, you know, we have a lot of professional people that are timber harvesters and so forth, but not planners.
Yeah, I got that thought.
So we could use a little bit of professional planner experience to help us.
And could you pay for that out of your undesignated fund balance?
That's a good question. I would probably.
I would think so.
I just want to comment that the Heritage Commission is planning and zoning. We are part of zoning, not just using the fund. We are basically, if you look at your zoning regulations for town, there is, the Heritage Commission is part of that. So, you know, that's sort of why we try to do it together. It isn't just using the money. We are actually part of planning and zoning. What we're trying to do with the regulations in the historic district is update something that's very old and unwieldy, difficult to, to do, cheaper to do it with a consultant than with, you know, a town attorney, get a hundred fifty an hour plus travel, and we're talking about a hundred an hour. So we're really talking about, you know, keeping it separate, but we are part of planning and zoning, which is, you know, a lot of people don't understand that.
Any other comments? Peter moved.
I have a static curiosity. Can I ask a question about a different article that's not none?
We've got enough to do here.
Howie, if we wanted to adjust that, would we do it at our meeting afterwards?
Well, yes, yeah. Once I close the public hearing, again, we'll reconvene.
Don't you want to have the correct wording for the public hearing? Once you smoke, once you allow the public hearing, wording can be changed.
I'm going to continue the public hearing.
Okay.
I'm going to ask for somebody to continue the public hearing. Go back into the budget meeting so we can vote on the article. I think it's a word. I don't know what else to do. We don't have the wording, we can't vote. Well, that's for me to tell. Oh, leave it open until he gets it before. If we could actually take a break or something.
Thank you for joining us.
A question came up on a couple of Warren articles, specifically Article thirty and Article thirty-one. Article thirty was originally set to establish capital reserve fund, two thousand dollars for forest fire management. The question came up, could we set up a revolving account instead? The reason being, oftentimes, we get refunded for helping home forest fires, which could go into that fund, which under a capital reserve fund, it couldn't.
Somewhat similar to what they did with the police department last year.
Right, right.
Now, I don't know if there's different RSAs in government or not, but.
Do you have a copy of that from last year?
I don't. I've been sort of on the road.
No, I didn't know if Teresa gave you one when you came in.
No.
I didn't see you.
Teresa, how's it going?
Good.
Good. Maybe that's how I know. Okay, we're trying to figure out what we're talking about in this from last year.
From last year.
From last year's eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. Can you tell me what the discussion has been? Obviously, I didn't.
Well, no, the discussion primarily was that, come here from Warren County, that oftentimes, we get reimbursed for doing some far, assisting on forest fires. And our thinking was that we could use those reimbursements to fund a resolving, revolving fund for when we have to pay out for, you know, forest fires. Rather than doing a capital reserve with, with, which we could pay with, which is fine, but the cash would just go into the general fund. It's kind of perpetual, yeah, perpetual, self-funded, basically.
Just give me a moment.
And by the way, Rick, just so you know, we have not closed the public hearing. Yeah, so.
Great.
Because once we do, and we vote on it, and get out of nothing, if we change it, right? And while, while you're doing that, I will, like, I can't vote, we're still in the public hearing.
Are you thinking there's going to be revenue coming back to the town as a result of the vote on Article thirty, the surveying? It's a, it's a twenty thousand dollar article.
We're talking about thirty-one. Look at the, the forest, forest management.
Yeah, he said twenty thousand dollars. It's two thousand.
Do you have the one?
Great.
Thirty-one.
One hundred and ten.
Yes, thank you.
That's what he's talking about.
Oh, okay.
That's what he's talking about.
But we are going to be talking about the second one as well.
In the same, in the same thing. Howie, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
If we, if we do it that way, then am I understanding that right now, we would not do the capital reserve, we would just do the revolving, which that means there's no money in there right now if they need something this year?
No, I, I think what we do is do initial funding of, you know, create a revolving account with initial funded, two thousand dollars, reset up.
That's what I wondered, if the data account didn't say that you would put money into it, and I don't know if you could start putting money in.
That'd be my thinking if we can do.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at information packet, I guess you want to call it, that was issued by the New Hampshire Department Administration, which talks about revolving funds, and said revolving funds may be established for the following purposes under RSA thirty-one ninety-five H. Recycling, ambulance services, public safety, special detail, which involves, you know, police officers.
What was the basis for number eighteen last year?
Right. Cable access, affordable housing, or certain energy efficiency improvements. Then they added also thirty-five B two, which authorizes a revolving fund for recreation.
Public safety.
I'm not sure that this would pass muster with.
Public safety. Fire department, public safety.
Well, you know, as I always tell my, my town administrators that I'm dealing with, it's not up to me, it's up to the DRA as to whether or not they approve these articles for funding under the warrant. You know, it's close. Forest fire management, is that public safety? I think public safety is viewed, at least by the DRA, as more police detail. So.
Yeah, but if you had a house sitting on the ridge, and you saw the smoke and the flames coming up over the top of the hill, I think you'd be considering that to be public safety, right?
Fire department's in the public safety building.
I would.
So change the word management. To make it fit public safety.
You know, we can amend this any way you want. It's not up to me, it's up to the DRA as to whether or not this Article thirty falls within what they deem to be.
Public safety.
Public safety.
But we're asking the other guy.
I've had any issues with DRA in the past about what passes muster under statutes and what, you know.
This was another article that I did send to DRA. This was another item of things that the selectmen wanted, a Warren article for, that I sent to DRA, and this is the wording that they sent me, so.
Okay.
But I think the question just arose whether or not we could.
Yeah, because, you know, we're just talking about the fact that we get funds back, and could this be self-funding in many ways? You know, if we continually sent some of our guys out to help other towns, and we get reimbursed for, you know, we're building up our own kidney for the day that we have to pay some help.
Sure.
But it might, but if it doesn't happen, if Rick says we can't do it, I mean, the money's coming into the general fund, we just take out all the general fund, put it back in here, so.
Yeah, we, we could do it that way.
You know, it's, it's probably, if we're, if we're on thin ice here with, with the DRA, maybe we should just leave it and just fund it every year like we do all the other cap reserves, and just put in one, two thousand dollars a year, and not, and not have to.
Take a risk.
Take a risk, yeah.
I'm not saying we can't do it.
I understand, Rick, yeah. But why, why take the risk? I mean, if it, if it's borderline, it's just as easy for us every year to put one or two, I mean, we could even ask, what did we get from forest fire, and if we got three thousand dollars in the general fund, we could take it back out and put it in here. I mean, we can do that manually without having to make it automatically.
Teresa, did you have any discussion with DRA as to whether this would fall under a revolving fund?
Did not.
I'm thinking that they could probably say no, but.
I'm thinking that if, if it could, that they would have said, or you could do this.
Right. I would think so too.
I, I really think it's, I mean, we know what the, what the amount is on an annual basis, that we would be receiving in revenue for fighting the fire, right, forest fire. We could just take that amount, like I said, and, and put it back in here ourselves.
I guess.
Yeah, I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Well, forest fire management doesn't really sound dangerous, you know, I mean, forest fire management could be anything, picking up sticks, raking leaves, cutting trees, got to manage it, to prevent.
Right, it's not necessarily public safety.
Yeah, I think, I think it's kind of stretching the subject a little bit, so save we forget it.
We already voted on any.
Yeah.
Article thirty-one, however, the definition.
Anything on this one?
We had a long discussion about transparency and what this meant. And I understand that there was alternative Warren article where it was a.
Expensible trust.
Expensible trust. So the question again came, could this be a revolving fund with the initial funding from the saleswoman and ongoing revenue from working sources? But it doesn't sound like.
Under recreation.
Instead of having to raise and appropriate the money, we want to just take the funding from the log money and use it.
From the log money?
The logging money.
Okay.
To establish revolving fund, deposit that money in, and be able to use it for these purposes, rather than have to raise and appropriate the money. And we're asked, you had said under recreation, it was okay?
Well, again, with dealing with DRA, who is the god as far as your funding is concerned, they always like to see you raise and appropriate every penny that you ever spend for any purpose, whether that's a gift or what have you. And I'm just trying to think, because there was an issue. And I'm just trying to think, because there was an issue here, Teresa, where they were looking, where the recreation department was looking to spend the money or before town meeting, help me out here a little bit, because it's.
We were going to get the money before the town meeting.
Right.
We had attempted to lay it before that.
And I did check with DRA, they said we could do that, because I was concerned that we couldn't do that because we hadn't created the fund yet.
Right.
But they said we could do it, and it would go into the general fund and then put into this, and then like shifted to this account when it got approved. If it didn't get approved, it would sit in the general fund and go to an under-reserved fund account, because it would.
Right, but there was another issue beyond that.
I think one of the issues on this was it's, it says raise and appropriate 20,000, and if the timber harvest wasn't as much as we thought, and let's say it only brought 10, we're looking at voter interpretation of this, that does this mean the taxpayers make up the additional 10? If you change the word down there where it says to be offset, if you change it to say to be partially offset, it would be definitely understandable that if the timber harvest was 10, you've got 20. The revolving fund concept was that then it would only be the timber money going in, which means you only have the timber money to spend. This looks like you have the timber money, whatever it is, plus whatever it takes to get to 20,000, whether it's a penny or $10,000. And the concern is, we don't have the numbers on the timber harvest, we're just up in the air on that.
Right. Mark, just put it here in front of me, in particular, the article that was originally.
The way it's written now, when it says to be offset, almost demands that the timber harvest be 20,000. And if it isn't, would lead, at least me to think the voters will make it up out of taxes.
I think the whole purpose is we want the timber money to be put in the account, and whatever it is that goes in the account, that's it. We don't want to raise and appropriate.
Okay, so.
Like we did with the police detail.
Right, so whatever the total amount that's raised by the timber harvest will be the amount of the garbage. That's tough, because you don't know what the timber harvest is going to run.
Well, we don't know what the police detail either.
What if you were to approach it from the side of putting, maybe raise and appropriate $5,000 or whatever the timber harvest.
You should just get rid of Article 31.
That you have the option, you'd be raising $5,000, but you could go up to whatever the amount.
Yeah, but all those parks.
Yeah, I don't think the DRA would go with that, because what the amounts that are set forth in the articles is the basis for setting the tax rate.
Rick, last year we wrote, we approved three articles that were set up as revolving funds.
Right.
One for police special details money.
Right.
One for the cable channel, and one for a drug forfeiture account.
Right.
Why is it all right to do that last year with that, but it's not okay to do that this year with this? If we did it three times last year.
Well, because the revolving fund article that authorizes towns to adopt revolving funds are fairly specific and talk about.
Is that 3195H?
B2 was Rick.
Yes.
One of them was recreation.
Recycling, ambulance services, public safety, special detail, cable access, which is one of the articles, affordable housing, certain energy efficiency improvements. And then they amended it to allow for revolving fund for recreation, so.
This sounds like recreation.
Well, it may, it may sound like recreation. I mean, the articles that we had last year as far as public safety, special detail, no question that Article, whatever it was, was right. Article 18, no question, it was public safety, special details, that's right on point. Article 19, cable access channel, that's specific as to what the legislature allows towns to do under RSA 3595H. Drug forfeiture, again.
So if we use the same wording here, we're saying for a parks and recreation building?
It's actually a complex, more than just a building from the sounds of it.
It's $20,000.
The fundamental question is, are we going to ask the voters to vote on the timber harvest amount, or are we going to vote, ask them to vote on $20,000, offset by whatever the timber harvest amount is?
Right, you know, I don't see this as being a significant impact on the tax rate either way, because what we talked about, what I talked about with Teresa is, they expect to generate close to 20 grand on the timber harvest. So are we talking about pennies here, folks, or are we talking about real dollars? I don't think we're talking about real dollars here.
When we discussed this in December, we were talking 18 acres, and further information has come in that maybe it's going to be a lot less, like 7 to 12 acres. And until you really inspect the tree or cut it, you don't know if the center is rotten or, you know, don't, you don't know the condition of the trees until you cut them. So, yet to be revealed.
Would it please, would it please, Rick, we blow at that figure? Because I don't have a problem blowing that figure. The whole purpose, you know, I'm thinking about this whole purpose, to make it non-lapsing, was to give the public the appearance that we're not trying to build a slush fund, that we can throw, throw their money into for, let's say, a building that's high in the sky right now. So what we wanted to do is use that money for getting the building design, or like this man just was talking about, or get a plan, someone presented it to us.
Let me ask a question, this is going to, I should ask this, Rick. Is the, is it the intention of the selectmen to spend more money than the harvest would generate?
No.
Then if we lower this to $10,000 to $5,000, it doesn't make it all easy?
Well, it does, if it goes off. It goes off, you know, with, with.
If the amount goes over, if you put $5,000 in there and you get 15, 10,000 of that, it's just going to go into the general fund. It can't be used then for the purpose that Wayne wants to use. It has to be safe, you gotta, you know, I wouldn't go.
For the bottom line budget, can you slide it into the parks and recreation? Not, not on the cap reserve.
No.
I say that's important.
I was going to come to the whole reason for the D, that's what I wanted to do, but I think the timber is what's the concern, we want to be able to use that money, we don't want to lose it like we did in the last time, we were down and cleared out of all things.
What's the problem with creating a revolving fund for recreation under 90, 30, 90?
There's that B2.
3195B2, create a recreational fund just to accept money from a specific timber harvest or any other source in the future? We could dump the money in this year, and then next year, if we find more money for some other source other than timber?
However, we had talked about law, like I said, 15, the idea was to keep it up to 20, it was not just spend 20,000, but as again, it was for the bidding purposes, not to set a target for any possible winners to be looking at. And that was the idea behind not law, to be honest with us. It's strictly to give a number of, you know, you're not going to set a target.
Well, if you put 20,000, is that setting a target, is the same just higher, or?
It's a safer target than 10 or 15 was put out there.
But it is a target.
If you raise an appropriate 20, the taxpayers are going to get a tax rate set on the 20.
But it would be adjusted, too.
But you don't have to spend the whole 20.
No.
So if you raised, say, 15, you could just spend 15, and the rest would go into surplus.
Because I really think, dealing with the lady at DRA, she's been great with working with these, and she knows exactly what we're trying to do, and she gave me the two choices, whether it be the expendable that we discussed or this one. And if there was another option, as, you know, the revolving fund, I would have think that she would have given me that option to use to be able to put on this.
But if we set up a revolving fund for recreation, how much latitude does that give us and what we can use the money for?
Good question. I don't know.
Well, Wayne has a revolving fund now, which he uses for whatever he needs necessary.
That's his activity, right?
So it would work the same way.
Folks, what is the town budget for this year?
$3 million.
$3 million.
$3 million. Okay, so we're talking about a $20,000 article that we know we're going to get some revenue for, whether it's 10,000, or 12,000, or 20,000, or maybe no impact at all on the tax rate. Question is, as far as I'm concerned, is whether or not you want to go forward with looking to build a parks and recreation building. This is not a big funding issue. We're not talking $200,000, we're talking somewhere between $10,000 and $0 for this. I don't think we need to get into a revolving fund, I'm not sure that DRA would ever approve a revolving fund, I don't, you know, because, you know, when you call the DRA, no disrespect to the DRA, it depends on who you talk to as to whether or not they're going to approve this article or not. So I think we just go forward, if the budget committee and the selectmen want to see ultimately a parks and recreation building considered, then let's just go with Article 31 as it reads. It's, the impact on the tax rate is so minimal, we're talking probably, realistically, $5,000 town-wide, what is that on the tax rate for each individual? .0001 cents per thousand? I don't know, but it's, it's a ridiculously low amount.
You missed the whole philosophy discussion.
Well, sure, I'm glad I did miss the whole philosophy discussion, because it's either you want to go forward with this or you don't. If you don't, then don't. If you don't do it, then just do it.
Why don't we just take Article 31, and, and as you read through it, it says on the ball field property, and put a period right there, drop the rest of it. In the, at the town meeting, selectmen can say that we want 20,000, but hopefully we're going to have offset the sale with timber, take the rest of it out and see what the voters want. If they want to give us 20, they do, if they don't, they don't. But let's take the rest of it off, just ask the 20 grand, talk to it at the town meeting, and go with it.
Well, you can do that, Danny, but the problem is, you talk about it in a deliberative session, and when you're in the voting booth, no one's talking.
I understand that, but, you know, we did that same survey where 80% of the people like parks and rec, and they think it's, so, I mean, let's, I'd say let's gamble that the people want, want this to happen, take a chance on it, and if it doesn't, it doesn't. That's my, that's my take on it. It'd be, it's easy to understand when you're in the voting booth, that the town want to spend $20,000 to do architectural plans for a new building. If they do, yes, if they don't, they don't, and we, in the, I know we're only going to have 90 or 100 people, but the people are here, we can say, hopefully this is going to be offset with the sale of timber, but let's take a chance and see what they say. I'd say just drop the rest of it, because it's confusing.
Wouldn't we have a bid on this timber?
If it helps at all, I would acknowledge Mark saying that I feel confident that we may be able, that we should be able to do what we want to get done at the $15,000, if that helps.
Wouldn't we have a price on the timber bids before the vote and before the deliberative session that we would know exactly? If you insert the word partially offset, it leaves the idea that we're going to sell some timber and offset some of this cost. If we have the bids, we can certainly, certainly in discussion, inform the voters on exactly what the timber is going to bring. And again, as Teresa said, we don't have to spend the whole 20. If it comes in, we're only going to get 12 for the timber, we can promise we'll only spend 12. Right?
My, I don't disagree. My only concern is, the way of Britain, are people just going to say, "I don't have a clue what it's saying, so I'm going to vote no." But, at 15, maybe they'll just.
If you put 15 in there and drop the rest of the verbiage in here, everybody's going to understand what 15,000 is.
But I like the, I like the offset by timber.
I think the voters would approve that more than they would.
You have the offset, yeah.
The only problem with the offset is.
Still recreating 15,000.
The problem with the offset is that we don't know if we're going to get to 15, that's my biggest issue.
Partially offset it, though.
If we use partially, we could offset 14,999, but if it says to be offset, as it's written now, it means there's not a dime put in in by the voters. The 20,000 has to come from timber, the way that reads.
So you're saying change it to 15 and put in partially offset, does that lie, Rick?
Or leave it at 20 and put partially?
I would like to sleep with the way it is, just change the number.
Well, you're saying change it to 15?
Just change it to 15, so that way you can go over all the verticals in the general fund.
Yeah, but what if we don't give 15?
Yeah, what if we get eight, they're going to spend it?
As long as we, as long as it doesn't, if we don't put in enough, the number that's too low, Teresa can play it better than I can.
Right, if you, yeah, so if you only get 10,000 for the trees, and you've got the article for 15, you really should only spend the 10,000 towards the survey, and I would hope that the board would see that.
Right, but what's the difference, if we, let's say we vote for 5,000?
Right, if you vote for five and you get 10, the other five has to go into the general fund, can't be used this year for that purpose. You can then next year say, come back with another article that says you want to use the money that you had gotten, the extra money, to use it for next, to put another article in, which is just confusing, I think, for people to understand that.
When we raise and appropriate, whether it's 15,000 or 20,000, that goes in the budget, right? So if you use only 10,000 of that, 5,000 goes in the general fund, right?
Right.
However, we as taxpayers have to pay taxes on that $20,000. That's the object that Judy was talking about, a revolving account. So the taxpayers aren't hit with that.
The 5,000 goes, if, let's say you go the 5,000 into the general fund, that goes to offset the tax rate at the end of the year.
I realize that.
So you, in essence, don't pay, because.
If you choose to use it to offset.
Right.
Right.
The selectmen have to decide at the end of the year what to take from the general fund to offset, it doesn't automatically go.
No, no, there's another step involved. The other step is that Teresa will have to estimate revenue for your revenue first, which is not the surplus, it's strictly what revenue we're going to get from other sources, and that would, that money from that lumber would be considered part of the revenue report. Then, you're right, then if that becomes, then they would have to make that choice. But she has to estimate revenue from other sources first.
Yep.
I think.
Sam, let's get her again, number one.
As I recall, this whole discussion was.
As I recall, this whole discussion was, prior to the meeting decided that if you get after lien right, many people, a few here in the audience said it was confusing. I think the word "and partially offset," and at least getting the part about the timber sale in there makes it clearer. If, if you use the "partially," to me, it's clearer. I'd like to see timber stay in there. I think it's more likely not to pass if, if you don't see it there.
If you use that word "partially," you're covered from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars, whatever it brings.
For me, as a resident, many people are not gonna be at the deliberative session knowing that you're talking about a timber offset, if it's not in there.
I just, I don't wanna see it fail. So let me throw this up. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars, partially offset by the sale of timber on map twenty, two hundred, lot three, for the purpose of, in other words, get the "partially offset" phrase right next to the dollar amount.
That's a good idea. That's fine. Did my lawyer have, what happens if you raise fifteen thousand dollars that more than "partially" offsets? That totally offsets?
True.
Can't just say "partially" or "totally."
You put one dollar in the general fund.
Yeah.
So therefore, you just say the word "offset," right? Read.
If I was to, if I was to word this, I would have it, you know, put whatever amount you want, instead of twenty thousand on fifteen thousand, I don't care. Again, I think this is, percentages of pennies on the tax rate, so I don't think this is a big deal.
It is a big deal, but we wind up with percentages to come up to three million dollars, and they all-
I, I, I understand, you know. I would say, in the fourth line, this property, this appropriation to be offset "partially or entirely by the sale of timber." So, take the twenty thousand dollars, if you want twenty thousand dollars, keep twenty thousand. If you want fifteen, fine. And then after "offset," put "partially or entirely." That would be it.
Interesting word, isn't it?
Again, I think this is so minimally impacting the tax rate, because we know we're having revenue generated by the sale of timber. Your total's gonna be around twenty grand, so, um... I suggest you guys vote and move on, frankly.
Would you add the line in, have the Selectmen name as agents to expend? So that you don't have to go down reading to the front of it?
Well, I know that there was going to be any, sure, you know, you could add that to, sure, that Jerry suggested that we have, add in that the Selectmen be named as agents to expend, sure.
Well, it's just that most of the capital reserve funds have the Selectmen name as agents to expend, so I just thought it would be appropriate to add that in. You know, not necessarily that, but I suggested that.
Well, this is, this is a capital reserve article. It's-
It's a one-time, uh-
One-time article.
It's a one-time article, so I don't really think you need that language. So-
Okay, so we have fifteen or twenty?
Fifteen or twenty is the first vote. Second vote is adding the language "partial" or, you know, uh-
Oh, remove the article, is that also?
Can we have both during this, during a public meeting?
Do we have to adjourn the public hearing and then have our meeting? Or do we vote during our public hearing?
Um, doesn't make any difference, you know, this is, you can do it either way.
I want to entertain a motion that you reword Article thirty-one.
So move.
What do you wanna, tell me what it's gonna say.
Well, we're gonna add "partially" or "entirely."
And dollar amount?
Ten thousand.
Fifteen.
Partially or entirely, after the word "offset."
And change the dollar amount to fifteen thousand.
What about ten thousand?
Well, I just said fifteen.
I've got a motion, do I have a second? Got a second? Any other discussion? Now, again, we have to hold our hands up, so Tony can count. All in favor, please raise, raise your hand. Opposed? Article thirty-three, we just need to vote on, thank you, counsel. I don't think we, uh-
So it's staying the same?
Can we make another motion on that?
Yeah.
Vote as no. So reconsider, it'd have to be reconsidered by somebody who voted no.
But does this motion stay the, the same as it is right here, twenty thousand, and without adding those words?
Yes.
Then we have to vote on this, then? Because the motion was to change this.
Right.
No one voted to change it. So now it's back to the twenty that we have to vote on.
Can I make a motion? Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we reconsider Article thirty-one, and we make the following changes, to the dollar amount to be twenty thousand. And after "to be," we add the words "partially" or "entirely." Otherwise, the article remains the same.
No, we voted on fifteen.
You leave the amount the same, but as "partially" entirely.
Yep.
Right.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Again, the same thing, all, all-
Wait a minute, yeah. What we're voting on is actually just the changing of the words. Twenty thousand, but partially and then add it.
Correct, offset.
Okay.
The money stays the same.
So the money's twenty thousand or fifteen?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty now.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, yes. Opposed?
Two, three, four. Five, four.
Now, you can go back to talking. Well, I, I should have you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Article thirty-three, we just need to vote on this. Again, I think I mentioned earlier, we voted on this as a line item in the capital obviously, capital outlay section of the budget. Uh, we just need a formality to get a number on it, uh, entertain a motion.
For Article thirty-three?
Article thirty-three.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your hand, please. Opposed? We've had two public inputs as it relates to the operating budget. The first one goes to the General Government Day eight. The Heritage Commission.
Seven and ten, we'll go.
Cam, what line do they go on there? Is that going to mislead us? I suppose it would, it's a maintenance and consultation historic buildings. Uh, that, that's in the building, that's in the building. So-
Yes, great, so. Well-
Will you two second, you're, you're twenty-five?
When you were asking if it's twenty-five, you weren't thinking that it was going to be twenty?
All right, which, which subject are we on?
Well, Heritage Commission, Day eight, General Government Day.
But, Howie, if it's easier, if you want to raise it to twenty-seven, five, we could go together.
No, it's, I think it's more appropriate that, 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 if we get the expenses in the right line item, long-term, we're better off.
To establish a professional service line.
Is there a solid-
Saying if it's approved.
If, if, if there's a, if it's a professional service line by the Heritage Commission, and the chart of accounts, that's where it belongs. No, I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the chart, yeah, chart of accounts for, like, if they're the, um, the planning one, they had a professional service line. So they all have chart numbers, so we can certainly, I would think, add that to the Heritage, called professional services.
And I would, I would say we should be considering adding a new chart of accounts line, so it's in the right line, for twenty-five hun, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars.
You need an account number, 'cause I have my file here.
No, we've got it.
No, you won't have it, Cam, we have to establish, we have to establish.
That's not- Don't entertain any discussion from the Budget Committee, hand or a motion.
I'll make the motion that we add twenty-five thousand under professional- Twenty-five hundred. Wow!
Then what was your cut, Lee?
Be easy.
Twenty-five hundred, for, under professional services.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, again, signify by raising your hand. All in favor, say aye, or raise no. Okay. Second item is the Planning Board, Planning and Zoning Board, Adjustment Line six.
Page six.
Page six. Thank you, Pete, for that.
How many chapters in the master plan?
Two chapters.
How many others currently?
Yeah.
Um, they, in the back end, they actually have to separate them out, but we have, uh, there was what they call a plus of a philosophy statement, which is now a vision statement. We had our land use, um, they did a combination of the resources and community facilities, but we also had a separate transportation chapter in there. So, the old line being approximately four, because you can't really divide out how they combine some of the, kind of, um, the history of services and everything else.
How many you anticipate in the new one, Howie?
Close to eight, eight, yes.
You actually said using the same person, correct?
I did.
Using the same individual that we've been using?
We don't have to, I mean-
No, but I mean, I, I'm just asking, because you seem pretty happy with that gentleman.
A certain chapter may require, but an expertise, you may not have. Yeah, yeah.
So we've got two chapters done, right?
And two that are, that's pretty well advanced, yeah.
And two that are pretty well advanced, and you've been able to do that with the ten thousand dollars, correct?
Well, we had actually, no, not correct. We had actually, I don't know, I'm trying to think. We had actually started those other chapters, we still had them, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I saw what that guy, it didn't get you a finished chapter?
It didn't, but I mean, I'm saying we can start.
Well, if Cam's twenty-five hundred is going to go towards a chapter.
Not all of it, I mean, ten, uh, one thousand, ten hours of a consultant to help with changing the rules and regs for the historic history. Fifteen hours are to help with our chapter, if they not completed this year, is a lot. The historical and cultural chapter is very different from any of the others, and there is a history of town that's a part of it, and also, there is, I asked for a grant last year, and the total number last year for the person to do it was eleven thousand dollars. So we're trying to do a lot of this ourselves, but with some professional help, and we may not get it all done this year, but we're gonna, you know, we're working on it.
So you've got three more chapters that you basically have to deal with, as Planning Board.
That's, that's important for the building size, you know, that's strictly that number, because there are additional ones that could be added. The economic development, uh, portions of chapters, although my Excel map hasn't been addressed at all, that's not included in.
I'm just trying to justify why you need more money if you've got two chapters completed and two well-advanced, so that's four.
Yeah, well, there's-
The Heritage Commission's gonna be working on one. That leaves three left, you did, which did already for ten thousand, so I'm trying to justify twenty-five, and it's not adding up.
Well, two of the ones that we did were really, um, pretty easy and straightforward. They were not nearly as in-depth as these other chapters would be. The other thing is, too, this consulting money is not just strictly for the master plan.
It's for subdivisions.
A planner come in, when we have preliminary discussions, we have, you know, we have a lot of reason to have him there.
He does a lot of our technical work as well.
Yes.
When he attends the meetings, he is actually consulting with us on all of the matters that are before us.
I've watched, I've seen it on TV, he does seem to be doing a good job. Adam, he's a double price.
And, yes, and we also share, you know, with the, with the zoning work as well.
The less than the land use, the faster it's all.
Right, and none of the chart of accounts is there anyway.
I don't, I don't wanna act like a historian, but, you know, I've been watching us attempt to work on this master plan for at least ten to twelve years, and this is the first time I feel that we're making some real progress. And I think the Planning Board is putting a tremendous effort into it. I think we should fund this, so we can complete it and get it done with, and I think it's money well-spent. I'd like to move the, the request from the Planning Board to add this money to the budget, and I think we should vote on it, and-
I'll second it.
Get this meeting over.
I've got a motion, second, to add ten thousand dollars to the Planning and Zoning Board, because it is the bottom budget now, consultation line, bringing the total up to twenty-five thousand. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
Opposed?
One, two, three. I think I missed a hand. Five, I'm ready to go on that, I missed you.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
You're staying.
Staying, it's hard.
Nothing else coming before us, except now we have to revote on Article thirty-five. Because Article thirty-five now goes by, add some, which I'm typing. Goes from three million nine forty-two, one sixty-nine, to three million nine fifty-four, six six nine. If I did look back.
Okay.
Do you want to be the comment?
You're adding twenty-seven.
Three million thirty-nine, fifty-four, six six nine.
It does not change the default budget. It does not change the default budget. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Again, Tony's going to have to keep count, so please keep your hands up in the air, and I promise I'll stand back, since I'm the shortest voice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Fosed. I will now officially close the public meeting, and I will...
Tell everybody to go home.
There's nothing else to come forward.